Good evening and welcome to the January 11, 2021 Menlo Park Planning Commission. I'm calling this meeting's order at 7:07 PM. Tonight, we have with us Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner DeCarty, Commissioner Doran, our Vice Chair, Commissioner Kennedy, and I am Henry Riggs, your Chair. We also have with us tonight Leo Tapia, Kyle Parata, and who am I missing on staff tonight at this point? I know we'll have a couple of additional staff members later. All right, perhaps that's it. So we'll move to our Item C, Reports and Announcements. And Kyle, I believe this is your meeting tonight.
Yes, thank you. Good to be back here tonight. Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Doran, and members of the Commission. Let's see, so I'll just start here with Reports and Announcements. So I wanted to alert the Planning Commission that tomorrow night, the City Council will hold its first meeting of the year, and they will be reviewing and acting upon the Menlo Park Community Center Campus Project. That's at the 110 Terminal, the Onetta Harris Community Center, Bellhaven Pool Community Center there at Kelly Park. And the Planning Commission reviewed that and recommended unanimously in December that the Council approve it, so they'll be delivering on that tomorrow night. There are a few other items on their agenda tomorrow night that I thought the Planning Commission might be interested in. One is that they will be receiving a letter response and authorizing a letter in response to a Seminole County Grand Jury Report on secondary units. So I know the Planning Commission's been interested in ADUs and secondary dwelling units, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that staff report if you're interested in. That's going on their agenda tomorrow night, the city's response letter to the grand jury's report. They also have a couple of other items, so they'll be looking at their kind of work plan, goal, priority setting process as well. And then they'll also be authorizing the city to accept a grant deed for 555 Hamilton Avenue to execute a BMR housing purchase there. I think that concludes the Reports and Announcements for tomorrow night's council meeting. I'd be happy to take in any questions.
All right, thank you. Any Commissioners have questions regarding tomorrow's meeting? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our public comment period. Excuse me. Under "Public Comment," the public may address the Commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the Consent Calendar. We don't happen to have a consent calendar tonight. Each speaker may address the Commission once under "Public Comment" for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The Commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the Commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under "Public Comment" other than to provide general information. Mr. Tapia, do we have any sign? Well, of course, I haven't properly called for it. In order to make public comment, if you were viewing this on your screen through GoToWebinar, please look to your right at the control panel for GoToWebinar, and you will see a small hand icon. If you click on that, it will tell us immediately that you would like to speak at this time. And we'll give a moment for anyone watching to find that icon. I will say on my screen, it is on a bar at the top of the screen.
Good evening, Chair. I would just add, I think for members of the public, their control panel is on the right-hand side of their screen. There should be a hand icon which you can click on to notify a member of staff that you do have a question. Alternatively, there is a question field box in your control panel where you can type in a written question or comment, and a member of staff can read that aloud. But at this time, I'm not seeing any virtual hands raised or any written correspondence.
All right. With that, in our double explanation, I think we've let some time go by, and I will close "Public Comment" for the overall hearing. There will be comment sessions for the individual items as we move forward tonight. So with that, let's open the public hearings. Tonight, our first item is F1. Excuse me, since I don't have a computer tonight, I'm going to get clever here. Thank you, Kyle. This is a use permit. Applicant Thomas James Holmes at 30 Sharon Court. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and accessory building and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot area and lot depth in the R1S Single Family Suburban Residential zoning district. And Chris, Mr. Turner, I believe this is your project. Do you have anything to add or clarify on the report?
Yes, good evening, Chair Riggs and Commissioners. We did receive one comment letter after publication of the staff report. Generally, the letter was expressing some concerns about the project, but development of this type in general, as far as demolishing old houses and rebuilding new houses. Number of concerns they expressed were the message it sends to the community about, you know, demolishing perfectly good houses to make way for these new spec houses, if you will. The environmental concerns from demolishing houses that may have things like asbestos and old recycled materials. They said they would like to see the materials reused rather than placed in a landfill. Third concern was the removal of healthy trees to make way for new houses. Then finally, the comment letter talks about privacy concerns. This is a two-story house surrounded by one-story houses, and they note that the house would be visible from all the properties. The letter was sent to the Commission, and it's also attached to the agenda on the website if you would like to view it. With that, I am happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any initial questions on this project? All right, seeing none. Mr. Turner, I'll ask if there is a presentation from the applicant on this project.
I don't believe a presentation, but the applicants would like to speak.
All right, perhaps that's how I should have put it.
Hi, Chair and Commissioners and Planning Staff. I am Anna Felver with Thomas James Holmes. I have Cynthia Tebow with me, who is also from Thomas James Holmes, and our architect Jill Williams from KPGY. And I wanted to present a little bit more about 30 Sharon and hopefully can answer some of the concerns that the residents had on this home as well. We have a lot size. It's a pie-shaped lot, so it's a different lot size than usual. And our lot size is actually one square foot under the minimum requirement, which puts us in that use permit, that substandard category and need for the use permit. We also have a depth that is substandard. We have a 96-foot, almost 97-foot depth, and so that's under the 100-foot minimum requirement. We do have an existing home that's a ranch style. It's built in 1955. It's a little under 2,000 square feet with an attached two-car garage. And we are proposing to build a two-story residence, five bedrooms, five and a half baths, two-car garage. And there's the image on the screen. We are underneath the maximum FAL and the maximum lot coverage, being at 22.5% lot coverage. The maximum is 35%. We'd like to propose a farmhouse style, which we think will blend really well with the farmhouses in this court and in the neighborhood. And we have a little bit of modern elements. We have a few standing metal-seamed roof awnings to add a little modern flavor to the design. And we have some window treatment that's a little bit more modern than the traditional farmhouse. We have three different materials being used. You can see there's that human-scale first-story roof line, which is part of our garage. Our garage is actually on the left-hand side and away from the view, which is really great, so we can have that stone mirror, that window facing the front and not seeing that two-car garage. And then we're using the horizontal siding, the hardy artisan lap siding with mitered corners. And then the vertical V groove boards above to give it a little bit of a gable treatment and some texture element. We're keeping with a very neutral color palette, trying to give it a modern look in that sense. And let's see. There's a total of 10 trees that we analyzed. Those 10 trees are not all on our site. We have five trees that are actually off-site along the rear edge of our lot that we have analyzed to make sure we know that they're there. They're heritage trees. We have three trees in the back that are prunished species or privet trees. They are impore to fair health, and so we are proposing to remove those. There are two trees in the front yard. One is heritage tree and one is a non-protected tree. We are keeping those and leaving them remain in the front yard. We do like to leave trees as much as possible that are healthy. We are planting and proposing nine olive trees all throughout the project, which could mature up to 25 feet in height. A few of these trees are on the right-hand side to create more privacy along that edge. And speaking of privacy, with this pie lot, our house is oriented in such a way that we're able to not be parallel with any house that's nearby. We do have, our house is kind of more contained in the middle, and we're able to give a more generous amount of setback on the sides. Along the rear and the left, we have houses that are 60 or 70 feet away. And on the right and left-hand side, we're able to be, I believe it's over 27 feet on one side and 30 feet and 40 feet on the other. So we have a generous setback. No windows are staring at other windows. And then adding those trees along the side or along where the stairwell window is is to provide more privacy for the neighbors and making sure that we're aware of that. As you can see in the rendering, there's a window above that garage first-story stone element that is a five-foot sill, and that would be the window facing the front, but towards the neighbor's house. And because we're oriented differently, we don't really have windows facing that other neighbor. So privacy was a concern that we did look at, and being able to provide screening was, we thought, beneficial for the side neighbor. Height, we are under the 28, maximum height, around 26 foot 9 inches at the middle ridge. And we are using different roof pitches on the sides to bring that roof line down and as well as introducing those first-story elements and setting back that second story quite a bit in the front. And then we did talk to, we had a PUE along the left edge of, and the left side property line. We did talk to West Bay Sanitary. They are the owner of that easement. And we do have a gate that we're proposing along the driveway that's on the left. And we wanted to make sure that that would be approved by them as our gate would actually cross across that five-foot PUE before it reaches the property line. And they were okay with the design as long as the automatic controller was on the house side and not in the PUE, as well as the hinge side of the gate, that it would be on the house side and not within the PUE. And concerning neighbor outreach, we did send out packets to the neighbors. We also spoke to the neighbors in person. This was back in June last year. And then concerning the neighbor's comment recently about demo, we do, we're aware of the lead and asbestos, and we typically do a survey, and we get certification prior to demo. And we'd like to make sure that those, we want to make sure that those harmful particles aren't in the air, so there are precautions and a process taken to make sure that we're protecting everyone surrounding this demo. And you have any questions or concerns?
Commissioners, any questions? All right, seeing no questions at this moment. So let's go ahead and see if we have some public comment, and then we'll bring this back up to the Commission for discussion. Once again, to the public, if you would like to comment on the project, look at your control panel on the right side of your screen, the GoToWebinar panel, and there is a hand icon. If you click on that hand, that signals to our staff immediately that you would like to make a comment on the project. And we will connect you, and you are welcome to speak for three minutes on this subject of 30 Sharon Court. There is also an area at the bottom of the menu where you can, if you prefer, type in a question, which Mr. Tapia can read to the Commission, and we can respond if we have the knowledge and ability.
Evening, Chair. I'm not seeing any comments or written correspondence, but we can give it a second or two, some come in.
All right, why don't we move ahead? It doesn't look like there's a desire for public comment at this moment, on this project, I should say. So I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commission for comments or motions or questions. Any comments on the siding, the overall design, any specifics of the design or privacy? Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I appreciated the materials. I appreciate the background in the presentation. I don't have any concerns about this project and would note that the only reason we're seeing it is because it's a foot less in total lot area and a couple of feet less in the back setback. Otherwise, this wouldn't come to us. So I prepared to make a motion to approve the project.
All right, we'll say there is a motion to approve from Mr. DeCarty. Any other comments or a second?
I would second.
All right, Ms. Kennedy, seconds. And Mr. Barnes?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all on the New Year. I have a couple of thoughts about comments or thoughts relating to the demoing of existing housing stock and the building of new housing stock. And I, for one, am very appreciative of the ability for new families to move into Menlo Park. Very often, the economics are different today than they were 20, 30, 40 years ago when the ranch-style homes were built. And the burden, based on the tax structure, often puts the onus on folks to, you know, build big enough to suit a larger family. So I think that updating the housing stock is good for Menlo Park. It's good for the property tax base. You know, if you take this particular development, they're on a 10,000, 999, so we'll call it 10,000 square foot lot, which is effectively double the size of what we have here. For instance, in Willow, it's 5,000 square feet on lots like mine, for instance. But yet, they're putting 3,786 square feet on it. So they've got double the lot size, but they're increasing the square footage of buildings only by 35%. So proportionally, it certainly is in line with a well-designed project. I think that steps are taken to recycle materials, and when you do get a building permit, you can get a rebate for recycle of materials when you're doing construction projects. So there's already programs in place for that. And I think privacy concerns, which occur with the building of a second story, you know, the onus is on, if it's a substandard lot, this Commission, for instance, and other folks to check for privacy concerns. And I think we do that diligently. So I am very supportive of, again, updating housing stock, and I think it is a fine project, and I will be voting to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. I'll make a couple of comments. I do have a little bit of concern for privacy on the right side. I did hear a comment tonight that windows weren't looking directly at another property, an adjacent property. But I'll just point out that the fact that the windows aren't parallel doesn't mean that there's no sight angle. Slightly, you know, 45 degrees to look out and down. People are perfectly capable of moving about the room or turning their heads. So the issue really is proximity as well as the angle of view. I do think the concept of planting at the property line to address that, which appears to be the right-side property line, that is definitely the go-to concept. The only problem is the choice of species, the olive. The olive prefers to grow no taller than it can be wide. And an olive that is eight or 10 years old might be all of 10 feet tall at most, which is actually not enough to even reach the view angle from someone standing 10 or 11 feet above ground and looking down at a window head that is eight or nine feet above ground. So I would like to ask the applicant if they are open to reconsidering the species of tree at the right property line.
Yes, we'd be open to considering that.
All right, that's terrific. If I could suggest that the applicant work with staff to select trees more appropriate for screening between a second floor and a first floor and a less than 30-foot separation. I do want to respond to a couple of comments in the letter regarding removal of trees. I think if I read it correctly, the greater number of trees removed are privets, which are nice when they're young, but they don't stop growing and they don't stop seeding. And most people end up considering a privet to be a weed. And I bought my house with 12 trees and slowly removed the four privets. I also planted 12 more trees. I am so glad that I removed most of the privets I wanted to go. I'd also like to augment what Commissioner Barnes pointed out about recycling. There are indeed rebates for recycling, but more than that, Menlo Park has for several years required Conformance with Build It Green, a program that requires, among other things, a major portion of a building demo has to go to a recycle yard. I mean, literally, the lumber that was used to frame the old house is typically taken to a lumber recycling yard. And you can buy 1950s lumber. And that goes for the bulk of the materials that aren't otherwise smashed up, like concrete and stucco. The city and California in general have come a long way with that. There are a lot of advantages to newer homes for the environment and even the neighborhood. The view angle is, I think, typically the awkward one. So with the landscaping, I'm going to cross off my list my concern for the stair window, which is a window design that we see rather frequently that is positioned such that as you approach the second-floor top tread, you have a nice picture-window view of window level at your neighbor's yard. So the trees will be addressing that. I don't want to miss the chance to say that this is a particularly nice plan. Not that that is in our purview, but I'd like to extend my compliments. And certainly, it's nice to have the garage turned so that that is not seen directly off the court. I'll note also that part of what, a significant part of what gives this building character and makes it approvable, easily approvable, is that the window mullion patterns provide that character. So my support will be dependent on those windows. And then finally, I would like to ask the architects, how sold are you on the finishes on your gable ends?
Good evening, Jill Williams.
Good evening.
What would you, I made myself a note, actually, about them. Is there a particular material or detail that you're thinking of?
Well, it's not to steer you to, you know, my favorite flavor of pie so much as to suggest that the vertical board, or in this case, V groove board, which is often MDF that's been through a machine, unfortunately calls to mind Texture 111 more than anything. We just, we can't help it. We have that in our minds because we see it, you know, including the 95% of us that don't know that it is Texture 111. We just know it was on Grandma's ranch house. And so while shingles are not farmhouse, I think you'll agree that this is not a strictly farmhouse form or set of finishes with the horizontal siding, most of it. So do you have any ideas that might substitute and might be a little less old-fashioned?
So I know we've had this discussion about that vertical board, and so I was thinking that what we have done before is almost like a reverse board and bat, so use like a 1x4 trim with a smaller space so that the, a little bit more positive than negative in that. So I think we could do something, and we would do it all in the smooth, hardy trim, because I think keeping that texture, that kind of clean texture, would be important. But that was one idea that I had made here on my notes before you brought it up.
All right, well, if the maker and secondor are agreed, I'd like to suggest that staff, again, staff, work with you on an alternative that would include that possibility, but that would not be the V groove with the unfortunate history. but that would not be the V groove with the unfortunate history. So let me ask Mr. DeCarty if that would be acceptable to him to open up the gables for materials options, including the one that Ms. Williams just described, and for the olive trees to be substituted with something that has a little more verticality.
Thank you, Chair Riggs, and thank you for the discussion. Appreciate it. I'm going to answer this in two ways. In the broader principle, I'm actually not in favor of this kind of direction. I believe that the planning department makes approvals that are fairly consistent. And if this lot size was just slightly bigger, they would have approved it as submitted. And our applicant would be on the way. So that's the general principle that I am operating under, because I think we need to be focused on equity and how people with lots of different sizes are allowed to develop their properties in our community. And I believe we are biased against those that are smaller. Having said that, in this specific instance, and having, I believe, and I'll double check with the applicant, that neither of these feels too terribly onerous. For the purposes of comedy and moving forward, I'd be happy to make the amendment if the applicant is is fine with doing both of those.
All right, Ms. Williams, you confirm your, your earlier position?
Anna, do you want to confirm? I think you were agreeable.
Yes, we can agree with that.
So Commissioner Kennedy is, Commissioner Kennedy is so inclined, then that is, then that's fine with me.
So I just want to, you know, I'm in 100% agreement with Commissioner DeCarty. I, with no, no offense to Chairman Riggs, I think that when we go down this rabbit hole, we do ourselves a disservice and we do the applicants a disservice as well. So since you are willing to make these, these, these changes, which I think it's inappropriate to ask, I will put, I will put that. If you're willing to do that, then I am happy to, you know, stay with my second.
Thank you. I would like to note, although staff may correct me, that in the past, when it doesn't go to commission, I have seen the planner take a more aggressive stance about certain issues, knowing that it would not have any further review. So I'm actually not sure that for these issues that are not uncommon for us to make comment on, that we're moving that much further than the ones that don't come to commission. I might, if I can just remember across 24 hours, I might ask Ms. Sando Meyer to, to tell me whether that is still true, as it used to be some years ago. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve with two requirements, one to substitute the species of the trees used as screening on the right side of the property, and the other to substitute the gable end finishes. And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Well, let me see, just raise your hands and then I'll call names. All right, I have Mr. Barnes in favor, Mr. DeCarty in favor, Mr. Doran in favor, and Ms. Kennedy in favor. And I am in favor. So you have the unanimous approval. Congratulations on your house design.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your accommodation. All right, that concludes our item F1. We now move on to the first of two projects that we have before us that are presented first with their environmental impact report, followed by a study session. In the past, we have taken a presentation from the consultant for the EIR, followed that with some questions, and then a presentation from the architect typically on the project overall. Then we backed up, I believe, and discussed the EIR and tried not to comment on the design until that was appropriate. Staff has proposed a little clarification to that process. So I believe, Ms. Baggett, you will take the first project, 111 Independence. And perhaps you could add to my comments about how we will address this first project tonight?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Riggs, and members of the commission. Good evening. Good evening to members of the public. The project being viewed this evening is the redevelopment of an existing 0.92 acre site located at 111 Independence Drive. And I believe I have a presentation prepared for this item that is not coming up for some reason. Excuse me, I'll leave up to that.
Through the chair, while we wait for Pyle's presentation to come up, maybe I could just quickly clarify or add on to your statement earlier. So I just want to make it clear that in terms of the presentations, we'll still do the city's presentation, quick overview of the draft EIR, followed by the applicant's presentation on the project, because we think that's helpful for the commission to hear at this time and the members of the public, as it might inform the draft EIR, public comments from the community and the commission. And then we'll follow that up with the EIR presentation from our consultant, LSA. And I'm probably speaking to some of Pyle's statements here, but what I wanted to get through was that we will bifurcate staff's presentation into a draft EIR overview right here. And then we'll pull up later the recommended kind of topic areas for the commission to consider as part of the study session at the opening of the study session item. So we'll still do the applicant's presentation now, but we'll hold the list of kind of considerations that are more general on the project and not CEQA-related for the second component here, the draft, sorry, the study session. And I might also recommend that the chair read the words for the agenda item before we start. That's not absolutely required. I know in the past, the chair has typically read it. So if you were inclined to do that, you'd want to do that now before Pyle starts her presentation. So sorry to, sorry to kind of throw us around here a little bit, but hopefully, hopefully that's helpful.
Well, this is our first somewhat milder modification on the presentation. Now, it will take me just a moment to pull up the text. All right, thank you, Mr. Tapia or Mr. Prado, whoever provided the data. Thank you. So tonight, we have a draft environmental impact report for SP Menlo LLC applicant that is 111 Independence Drive. This is a public hearing to receive public comments on the draft EIR for the proposed multifamily development project consisting of 105 dwelling units and approximately 746 square foot commercial space in one building with an above-grade multi-story parking garage integrated into the proposed eight-story building. This is located in the RMUB residential mixed-use bonus zoning district. The draft EIR identifies less-than-significant effects in the following topic areas: population and housing, transportation, and greenhouse gas emissions. The draft EIR identifies less-than-significant effects with mitigation for the air quality and noise, which is operational traffic and stationary noise, the topic areas. The California Environmental Quality Act, we call CEQA, requires this notice to disclose whether any listed hazardous waste sites are present at the location. Project location does not contain a hazardous waste site included in the list prepared under section 65962.5 of the government code. The city previously prepared an initial study for the proposed project that determined the following topic areas would have no impacts. That's less-than-significant impacts or less-than-significant impacts with mitigation measures, including applicable mitigation measures from the Connect Menlo EIR. In other words, our overall zoning area EIR that was done in 2016. So those described would be aesthetics, agriculture and forestry resources, biological resources, cultural resources, energy, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, mineral resources, noise, meaning construction period, ground-borne vibration, and aircraft-related noise, public services, recreation, utilities and service systems, tribal cultural resources, and wildfire. Written comments on the draft EIR, excuse me, EIR may also be submitted to the community development department at 701 Laurel Street in Menlo Park, no later than 5:00 PM on February 2, 2021. So back to Ms. Baggett.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs, and thank you, Kyle. So like I was mentioning, the project before you is the redevelopment of an existing site at 111 Independence Drive. The project site is located east of Marsh Road and near 101 and Marsh Road interchange. The project is currently developed with a 15,000-square-foot single-story office building, which is supposed to be demolished as, as part of the redevelopment. The applicant requests environmental review, use permit, architectural control, and below-market rate housing agreement to redevelop the project site with 105 apartment units and 746 square feet of commercial cafe space. Since this project is a bonus level density with increased density project, this project will be required to provide community amenities as part of the proposal. Now, the focus of tonight's meeting, as Kyle mentioned earlier, is first to receive comments on the focus draft environmental impact report that was prepared for the project consisting with the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA requirements, and second to hold a study session to review the design aspects of the project. So in order to move through these two components, as Kyle was touching upon briefly, staff would like to propose the following. After my presentation, the applicant will, will make a presentation on the project design, following which the city's environmental consultant, LSA, will review the findings of the draft impact, the draft environmental impact report, and also review the CEQA process. After that, staff request that the commission open up to public comments and solicit comments from the community on the draft EIR, and close the item by asking questions and provide commission comments. For the study session component, staff would like to do a brief introduction of the several topic areas for commission consideration, following which the commission is welcome to ask questions of staff and the applicant. And then we would request that you open the public hearing one more time to solicit the community's comments on the design aspects, and then close the items with the commission's comments. I will be available throughout this process to respond to any questions that you might have. I would again like to remind the community that the draft impact, the draft EIR is available for public review currently, and that the last day to provide comments is February 2. Comments can be provided via email or by mail sent to City Hall. And this concludes my presentation. And I welcome Satish Karaval and his team to provide an overview of the project design. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baggett. Tell us again who will make the presentation for the applicant?
It will be Satish Karaval and his team.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Nathan, do you want to pull up the slide presentation? Can everybody hear me?
Please, please. I think they got to pull it up for me and give me control. We can hear you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, although we see Nathan on screen, not you.
Nathan, just have control mouse and keyboard.
Okay. It's going to be a little slow. Okay. Get this up and running. Okay. All right, please. All right, yeah. Is it, can you flip over to the second slide? So I'm dialed in. My internet was not behaving too well, and I've got four kids competing with it. So we've gone the safer route here. Good evening, planning commissioners. It's certainly good to be before you again now officially for the third time. It's a big milestone tonight with the draft EIR. So we are quite excited about this and hope you share our enthusiasm. This being the third time, I thought I would start with providing a little of the history of the project and how we arrived at tonight. It's been quite the journey with a lot of staff effort over the last four or five years now. We've actually had, I was counting, four different people from the planning staff that have been, at one point, the lead planner on this project, beginning with Deanna, then Kyle, then Katie, and now Pyle. So if there's a theme here, it's if you work on this project, you get promoted within the city of Menlo Park. So let's look for Pyle's ascension here shortly. So in 2016, when Connect Menlo was being finalized, is when we began discussions with, with Deanna. And that led to our conceptual plans being submitted in March of 2017. It was a very collaborative process with, with the team. And that led to a subsequent set of plans that we then had the development review team meeting with all the various key, key city departments. And that was late 2017. Based on that input, of course, we prepared a set of plans that was much more detailed. And that was what was presented to you in June of 2018, our first planning commission study session. Several of you here were present, present for that. And then I think all of you were present for the subsequent one a year later in June of 2019. So there were several areas of feedback from 2018, which were then addressed in 2019. I'd like to go through those first before we get into how we've addressed the feedback from the last study session, knowing full well that the main focus of tonight is the EIR. I just thought this would be a helpful, helpful background. So one of the main issues back then was the parking ratio. At that time, we were at 1.4, well within the allowable guidelines, however you had suggested, reducing it even further, which we did down to one, to the 1.1 range. At that time, open space, opening up the front plaza to improve the public accessibility was a key point for one of the commissioners, which we subsequently did, and everybody was satisfied with that as well. Going back to 2018, the community amenities was being discussed. It was quite preliminary in terms of the process hadn't really been fully established by the, by the city in terms of the appraisal process. But subsequent to that meeting and some input, strong recommendations from staff led to the cafe inclusion and the subsequent plan set. So they, and I always like to remind everybody that the cafe is one of the items on the community amenities list. So that was kind of where that started. And back then, the BMR issue that was being raised for us was to equally distribute the BMR units, both geographically within the building, as well as across multiple income levels, which we then did. which we then did do in the June uh, twenty nineteen session, um, distributed them uh, both horizontally and vertically. And at that time, we proposed a fifty fifty moderate low income split, whereas initially we were um, we were all moderate. And that brings us to tonight, where I would like to start off with the highlights of key changes made based upon uh, the twenty nineteen um, study, study session. First and foremost, a uh, a big ticket item here obviously is our B M R proposal is now across three income levels, of moderate, low, and very low. I'm not totally privy with all the other projects, uh, but I believe we we might be somewhat unique in 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 this offering. Um, and this is in response to really continuous, consistent feedback from the community and commissioners over the last several years, really. Next, and maybe equally important, we have provided a formal community amenities proposal, going through a lengthy, multi-step process with the city and several consultants. The result is two additional B M R units in addition to the previously discussed uh, cafe. And again, these, both these items, B M R units and the cafe are from the community amenities list. Uh, now we know we have received uh, last time, mixed feedback from you specifically on the cafe. Based upon the last time, some commissioners love the idea and certainly staffed us as well, having heavily recommended it, but some commissioners were not as big of a proponents. Well, what we've really worked diligently on is if you consider the totality of the project, we're really addressing a significant amount of the hot buttons of every commissioner, uh, staff and community. Um, so while you might not, you know, individually, all of you be a fan of the cafe, we certainly know your attitude of the B M R and the approach we've taken there of the uh, multiple income levels. Uh, next, uh, switching gears a little bit environmental, we are providing twenty two E V S E stalls from the outset, which is thirty five percent more than required and keep in mind, and this is no, this is no small point, this is an all electric building. We also made a uh, small refinement, which reduced parking even a little bit further while keeping the bike parking maxed out. So uh, again, we have minimal auto parking and maximum bike parking. Uh, lastly, there was some feedback last time about the primary facade color. You might recall, um, this was interesting because this was, it was something that we had frankly batted around on our side as well and we have decided to revise it to a gray. Uh, we feel it's a warmer and more uh, residential. As a reminder, this project involved tearing down an office building and not adding any more office stock, which is allowed in the R M U zoning, so the project is really a hundred percent geared towards reducing the jobs, uh, housing imbalance. Um, I'm sure I don't, uh, we'll talk more about the community amenity proposal, I think it's more appropriate in the second portion of the of the program. This is really E I R is the main, main agenda item of this, of this evening, or at least certainly at the, at the outset. So I will hand this over now to B D E. Um, Nathan, I see you and you will provide a little bit of the uh, uh, architectural deal.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Uh, my name is Nathan Simpson. Um, I've been the project designer on this since um, it came to our office about five years ago. Um, John Ennis is on the phone also. He's the president of B D E. And I'm just excited to be here. After five years, I'm pretty sure we're getting closer to the finish line here. Um, so just to kind of orient to the site, we have a trapezoidal um, site that has a curved section of it along Independence Drive. Um, north is up on this page. Um, when you look at the site from Independence, this is the curve of Independence in the lower right. You can see our site right here and then the Menlo Park Gateway Building and then one oh one right off to the lower right. And then just from Marsh Road off, off ramps, you can also see the site and the adjacent uh, office buildings that are going up. Um, our guiding documents, as previously mentioned, we are just part of the um, Menlo Park Planning Code or Minus ten twenty six and we are the R M U district, which is um, why we have both cafe and residential. Um, and you can also just kind of see our site right here if you're curious. Um, a lot of this stuff you guys have heard already, but just to recap, we are a hundred and five units that's maintained. Um, we are maintaining a mix of units from studios, one beds, two beds. Since we last saw you guys, we gained a few bedrooms, but um, two bedrooms, I believe. So we went from a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and sixteen bedrooms. We're maintaining fourteen onsite affordable units. The retail we'll go through in a moment. I'll show you guys where that is. Required parking, when we first went in, like Satie said, we went in very high. Um, working with the city and community, we've taken it down to one oh nine, which is still well within um, our range. Gives us a little bit more than one to one per um, residential unit, um, so we can have something like visitor parking. Um, part of our project is a public open space that fronts on to Independence Drive. And within our building, we provide a hundred and sixty um, resident bike parking. It's spread out within two um, two rooms. And if you look at the ratio, this is actually one point five two, if I remember correctly. So we're actually a little above the max, if you look at one point five straight on. And then just to keep this a bike friendly area, we do have seventeen exterior uh, short term bike parking stalls. Just looking at the plan, you can see um, the curve of Independence here in gray. Um, you can also see the plaza, which I'll let Paul Latiri talk about in a little bit more detail. Um, starting in the lower right hand corner, you can see our garage access point. We have a single garage access point for all hundred and five stalls. This line that you can kind of see my mouse running along right here is a gate. So we have five stalls that are within a open garage that anyone can drive into. And then all of our residential parking is in back, located within three levels of parking. Um, along the front edge of Independence, we have amenities, including a dog wash, a cafe, which is right here spilling into this nice little um, court. So we've actually created some outdoor space for the cafe to make it a little bit more viable, especially in these COVID times, outdoor spaces king. Um, we do have fitness lounge, amenity and a lobby all fronting on to the plaza. Um, we've gone through an effort to make sure that all spaces around the building are utilized and integrated with our neighbors. Um, anything through paving to making sure E V A reaches all the way within the site and that matches up with paving adjacent. Um, I'm going to skip over the next two floors, floors two and three, because they are very similar to this floor. It's two, two more levels of parking. All of our amenities along the front are raised up above um, floodplain and are double height. And then there's one level of residential units just facing out over the amenities. Going up to a more typical floor, this is our fourth floor. Um, many things have stayed the same since you've all seen it last. We've gone through a lot of refinement, um, mainly getting um, unit plans ready, but essentially this floor shows we have a club room over in the corner that gives you access to a heavily amenitized um, common courtyard. And then you can see all the units just kind of wrapping around the building. And then the front here is a private courtyard. These are all private decks. Um, that is the result of our curved facade. Um, going up to a more typical floor, this is our top floor. You can see the overall footprint of the building and then a nice little foot, a little uh, park roof deck, sorry, little roof deck over in the corner here with a club room adjacent to it, um, for a nice little amenity for the residents. Um, as mentioned previously, we did go away from our blue palette and we are proposing a warmer gray palette. Um, it is a few different grays on here, but our primary one is a very neutral, dark, warm gray. Um, I've used a very similar palette like this that I'm, I think everyone's happy with it. Um, I've never had a complaint on that. Um, going through the palette real quick, we are proposing vinyl windows. Um, this is our primary body color right here. It's a little bit darker. Keep in mind, this is on screen, so the colors aren't going to be perfect. Um, along the arc of the building, there is some accent colors that go inside the frames. This is just giving an idea of that because like, we're not going to get colors perfect here. Um, the project does have bore form concrete, which is a nice warm earth and material. And we are proposing the phenolic wood panel still, which is a real wood on a resin panel. Um, all the metalwork on the project is using a consistent theme, which is a um, steel railing. It's in a Metco panel. You can get a quarter there for a little bit of scale. And one of the comments that we got on our last round was providing bird safe glazing. So all of our glass rails, which is minimal, have been um, converted to um, opaque. Um, mentioning earlier about the arc of the building, there's this curve that we're doing, which I'll show in the next photo to help um, lend with the adjacent buildings and just place our building in context. And because of this arc, um, this is something that's come up and I believe everyone's been very receptive of this, which is we have building modulation requirements and we weren't totally compliant with them, but is what we've proposed is exceeding them by providing additional setback. And we do that by using this curve and just getting this gray area. So we're very close on that. Um, the compliant, we're only about ten percent off. And again, with all this gray area, as additional setback, we exceed it. Um, and the reason we would do this is for this right here, it's basically the yin and yang. Um, so we are playing with the Menlo Gateway Building's curve to help complement the site, um, which is something you rarely get the opportunity to do. Um, and then some other things I mentioned earlier, which is where I'm going to start letting Paul um, speak about, is we've worked on our um, neighborhood, neighborhood connectivity, which is a lot of sighting, but we've also added additional visual interest along our garage facade because that was one of the comments that came up. And uh, with that, Paul, are you there?
I'm here. I'm here on cue. Um, Paul Latiri with the Gazardo Partnership Landscape Architects for the project. Um, yeah, I think we've, we've made a lot of refinements to the, to the plan in the year and a half since the last time you saw it. Uh, it looks, it looks pretty similar to what it was before, but there are some significant differences, we think. One of which is we now have a uh, a proper width of uh, a planting strip along the street and the street trees are now there. In the previous plan, the street trees were in the plaza because we had some issues with, with utilities and in that, in the time we've had between, we've been able to ferret out exactly where those utilities are and to be able to get the trees to miss them. So now there's a five foot sidewalk and a five foot planting strip there. Before, we had a very skinny strip and the trees were all set back, which I think really helps insulate the folks that are going to use this open space from the street scene itself. I think it feels, I think it feels a lot better that way. We've uh, we have the, the, the transformers at the upper left there. I guess Nathan, you can point out things, right? Um, uh, we have those screened uh, a metal grill sort of screen fence that we have in our imagery we'll show with you. I think we showed you something similar last time. Um, we've uh, done some things like now, since the lobby has a direct connection from the street, the stairs that are at the bottom of the plan there uh, directly connect to the lobby. We have the handicap access through that, through that ramp system where you come in at the bottom in the middle and you go right or left to get to the, to the front doors of the building. Uh, we still have the wood seating elements and we still have a, a little podium space that can have a, an art piece on it uh, to be selected yet. So it has some, it has some uh, some character to it and we have a fairly rich paving pattern uh, and paving materials throughout. It's all, it's all pretty much pavers, uh, any of the pedestrian services, with the exception of the public sidewalk, which was ordained to be concrete, uh, we have uh, we have pavers uh, in those other spaces. And I think uh, you know, our street tree quantity is the same, but they've, they've been moved around a bit. The reason there's none in that center space is because that's where the utility conflict can't really be uh, solved by having any trees in it. So the utility doesn't follow the street line. It's kind of wanders around. And I think uh, I think in our, our E V A uh, zone up on top is a stamped asphalt. So it has a uh, more than a utilitarian feel to it, awesome color and texture to it. Uh, the basketball court that's there will be smooth, uh, and I think we, we still have the, the dog run is that dark green zone at the upper right.
Paul, could I just interrupt for a second since potentially there are people listening who are not commission members or architects? So uh, an E V A zone is an emergency vehicle access zone.
Thank you. Sorry about, so I'll, I'll, I'll watch the jargon and any future uh, descriptions, right?
Thank you.
All right. Um, yes, um, and then there's uh, the, I said the bocce court on the other, on the other side, that sort of orange, orange area. And we've integrated the uh, the E V A that's labeled there that on the bottom right, which has now been defined as an emergency vehicle access that's on the adjacent parcel. We've integrated our paving, so it's the same paving pattern across it. So once it's all built, it'll feel like one continuous uh, space there, which I think came up last night. You go to the next slide, Nathan. Yeah, our, our, or the next two slides. We've, we've made some modifications to the podium area, pool shapes gotten a little more interesting. We've added uh, bathrooms up there, uh, so that, that, there you go. Uh, and uh, it requires some minor alterations to how the space works, but the amenities that were there uh, in the previous plan are still there now. And uh, we, you know, we've got a, a little bit better relationship between the pool and the rest of the world too, uh, in terms of uh, grade changes and uh, proportion of space. I think before the pool was a little bit too cramped. It wasn't really enough room to furnish it and now I think we have enough room to do that. If you can go on to the next, uh, next slide, the roof, the roof deck is, is, is small. It's really a view space and an indoor outdoor space, small amount of planting, uh, paving, pedestal paving and and some decking material up there, so it's pretty simple. And uh, we think it'll be a great spot to, this is a great view from up there, so really wanted to maximize that. Uh, next one. And the, you know, the imagery page, uh, largely the same, not all, not identical. Uh, I'll just point out a couple uh, on the, on the left side there that uh, there's a metal panel that sort of has some horizontal openings in it that, thinking that that's our transformers screening uh, element that's on the ground plan. I think we're showing it as being six feet tall, so it's roughly the height of the transformers. Um, yeah, of course, the transformers are more significant because we now have an all electric building, so uh, we also uh, will have an all electric fireplace and all electric barbecues and all, all the rest of it, everything else, everything. Uh, just the rest of it is just a sense of mostly what's happening uh, on the podium in the middle uh, in terms of materials and colors and uh, the eighth floor. You know, our roof deck is nowhere near the size of any of those images, but the general character is what we're looking to get, get to. So I think we can charge on to our last slide, I believe. Yes.
So that's uh, kept our presentation a little shorter.
That concludes our presentation.
Uh, can I have your permission? Sorry, please go ahead.
Oh, uh, just confirming that that concludes the presentation and uh, Ms. Bagat, do we want to move uh, to the um, E I R at this point?
Yes, so we would like to invite uh, City's Environmental Consultant L S A to present the um, environmental impact report findings and review the process of the E I R. Next.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, Matthew Wazlow at L S A here, uh, joining you again. Um, and before I get started, if I could just ask whoever's in charge to promote Amanda Lee from All right. So, good evening. Uh, Matthew Wazlow at L S A. We are the city's consultant for environmental view of the proposed one eleven Independence Drive project. Uh, with me tonight is Teresa Wallace, who's L S A's principal in charge, as well as I just mentioned, Amanda Lee from Kittleson, who is our transportation consultant for the project. So uh, this first slide just lists the purpose or the topics that I'll cover tonight in my uh, presentation, including the purpose of tonight's hearing, uh, an overview of the CEQA process and timeline that has occurred thus far and going forward, as well as points along the way that involve opportunities for public comment. I'll also briefly go over the purpose of CEQA, discuss the Connect Menlo E I R again and its relationship to this project and then give an overview of the draft E I R's findings. And after my presentation has concluded, as you've heard, you'll have an opportunity to provide your comments. So as I mentioned, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear your comments on the E I R. Uh, the public comment period began on December fourth and written comments must be received by the Close of Business on February second. Uh, the focus of your comments should be on the adequacy of the analysis provided in the draft E I R. Uh, the merits of the project will be considered, but as a separate action at a future meeting. Uh, and I want to note, while we're happy to answer questions tonight, we would ask that any comments are really technical. we would ask that any comments of really technical nature be provided again in writing. And so that way, we can take the time to provide thorough written responses. We want to make sure we're providing active responses and maybe to do some additional technical analysis or talk with our specialists to make sure we, we answer those correctly. I also want to note that we have a court reporter here, I believe, to record your comments, and a transcript of all comments received tonight will be prepared. Each comment on the EIR will then be formally responded to in writing. This slide shows the purpose of CEQA and, and the overview of the CEQA process. CEQA requires that all lead agencies, actually, I think I missed this. Sorry about that. No, never mind. Sorry. So this slide gives some background on CEQA, or the California Environmental Quality Act, which is the state law that requires an environmental evaluation of the project. Generally, CEQA requires that lead agencies or all agencies that approve projects evaluate environmental impacts associated with those projects. This evaluation must adequately, adequately inform the city's decision-makers, other agencies, and the general public about the potential environmental consequences of project approval. If environmental impacts are identified, then that lead agency needs to identify ways to mitigate or avoid those impacts. So CEQA documents are disclosure documents. The lead agency is using the information provided in the CEQA document to make informed decisions about a project and to disclose potential environmental impacts associated with the construction and operation of a project. And it's important to note that the environmental document does not dictate whether or not the project is approved. So I just briefly wanted to touch on the Connect Menlo EIR and its relationship to the project. So the environmental analysis for this project here is on the Connect Menlo final EIR, which, as you know, was certified in November 2016. The Connect Menlo EIR provided a program-level analysis of the development potential envisioned for the entire city, including the increased development potential, specifically in the Bayfront area where the project site is located. This EIR evaluated the impacts of approximately 2.3 million square feet of non-residential space, 100 hotel rooms, and up to 4,500 residential units. So the proposed project does fit within those development assumptions of the Connect Menlo EIR. As we've discussed before, the city of East Palo Alto challenged the city's certification of the EIR. And to settle a litigation, the parties entered into a settlement agreement that allows for effects that were not analyzed as significant in the prior EIR or are subject to substantial reduction or avoidance through project revision, but requires certain projects, including those utilizing bonus level development, like the proposed project to conduct a focused EIR with regard to housing and transportation at a minimum. Environmental review of the project also comprised with terms of the settlement agreement. Here's my timeline. So this slide shows the overall schedule for the environmental review process. On June 14, 2019, the city issued a notice of preparation or an NOP, notifying interested parties and responsible agencies that an EIR would be prepared. And an initial study was included for review. The comment period to provide public comments on the scope and the content of the EIR ended on July 15, 2019. And all of those comments that were received were considered during preparation of the draft EIR. So the city, along the left side, at LSA, then prepared the draft EIR, and the standard 45-day comment period was extended to 60 days. After the close of the comment period on February 2, we will prepare the written responses to each of the comments received on the adequacy of the EIR analysis in what's called a response to comments document. The response to comments document will also include any revisions to the draft EIR, if any are necessary. Together with the draft EIR and the response to comments document, that is the final EIR. The final EIR will be published and available a minimum of 10 days before any additional hearings are held. Once the final EIR is complete, the city will consider certification of the EIR, and after that, will consider approval of the project as a separate action. Of course, the public may attend these hearings and provide comments on the final EIR, which, as you can see, is currently anticipated in the early summer of 2021. So this slide gives a short overview of the CEQA process with the items shown in blue as those opportunities for public comment. So as you can see, there was a 30-day period after the NOP was published, and now we're in a 60-day period for the comment period for the draft EIR. And then finally, there will be an opportunity for public comment during the final certification hearing as well. So as I mentioned before, initial study was circulated with, with the notice of preparation that an EIR would be prepared. Based on the conclusions of the initial study, the topics shown on this slide in the, in the right three columns were not, were not anticipated to result in significant effects, and therefore, they were deemed to be adequately addressed through the program-level EIR prepared for Connect Menlo. And then those topics on the left there are the ones that are included in the, in the EIR itself. So based on this analysis, the topics of population and housing, transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise were further evaluated in the focused EIR. This slide gives an overview of the, of the draft EIR's findings for each topic, which I'll go over more in depth in the next couple of slides. The main takeaway is that there are, there were no significant unavoidable impacts identified, and that all of these impacts could be reduced to a less insignificant level with the implementation of some identified mitigation measures. So for the topic of population and housing, a housing needs assessment, or an HNA, was prepared in compliance with the terms of the settlement agreement and to provide background and context for this section. Briefly, the project would fit within the growth projections identified in the Connect Menlo EIR and would not induce any unplanned population growth. In addition, the project would increase the availability of housing and would not increase displacement pressures on surrounding communities, including Bellhaven or East Palo Alto. This conclusion considered the new housing provided by the project, the reduced worker housing demand associated with removing the existing job generating uses on the site, and the minor increase in a demand for workers, worker housing associated with commercial space at the site, as well as any new services off-site. No mitigation measures will be required for the topic of population and housing. So for transportation, a transportation impact analysis, or a TIA, was prepared consistent with the city's TIA guidelines. Under CEQA, as, as I think we've discussed here before, roadway congestion or level of service is no longer the metric of evaluation for transportation impacts. Instead, in compliance with SB 743 and the city's updated TIA guidelines, vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, is the new threshold of significance. The threshold considers VMT per person or per capita, which is really a measurement of the amount of distance that a resident, employee, or a visitor to the project site drives. For mixed-use project, like, like, like the one we have tonight, each land use is independently evaluated. So the analysis for the residential component of the project determined that with implementation of a transportation, transportation demand management plan, or TDM plan, proposed by the project, the project itself would be below the established threshold, which needs to be 15% below the regional average VMT. So for example, if, if the regional average were 100, the project would need to be 85 or below. So for, for the commercial use, this space is too small to require the analysis of VMT and was exempted from further analysis. The EIR also determined that the project would generally comply with the applicable transportation-related plans and policies, would not create any design hazards or result in inadequate emergency access. Consistent with the city's TIA guidelines, a level of service analysis was also conducted for local planning purposes. Two intersections were identified in the near term as exceeding the city's average critical movement delay threshold, and five were determined to exceed that threshold during cumulative conditions. Intersection improvements were recommended to be included as project conditions of approval that would address these potential impacts. For the topic of air quality, the analysis determined that the implementation of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, or BACMED, their basic construction measures would be required to reduce construction period air quality impacts to a less than significant level, which is consistent with the findings of the Connect Menlo EIR. The project would also not exceed regional air quality emissions thresholds during operation. The EIR did also include a construction and operational health risk assessment, or an HRA, which is consistent with the mitigation measures outlined in the Connect Menlo EIR requiring those for individual projects. The HRA determines whether or not sensitive receptors, including existing residential uses, schools, or other similar sensitive uses, could be exposed to toxic air contaminants. The analysis determined that off-site sensitive receptors would not be exposed to substantial increases in those toxic air contaminants associated with the project, and no mitigation measure would be required there. We would have mitigation measures required to reduce the exposure of future residents to indoor particulate matter associated with existing conditions related to a high-volume roadway. And that, that really includes the installation of HVAC and air filtration systems, and setting the intakes away from those roads. For the topic of greenhouse gas emissions, all, all of the impacts would be less than significant with implementation of those basic construction measures from BACMED that I just mentioned would further reduce the THG emissions during construction. The project would be well below BACMED's thresholds for operational emissions, and the project would generally comply with applicable plans, policies, and regulations that were adopted for the purpose of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, including the state's scoping plan, Plan Bay Area, and the city's climate action plan. And finally, for noise, the analysis determined that transportation-related increases in noise would not exceed the city's standards, because the project would locate residential land uses in an area that is considered conditionally acceptable, a conditionally acceptable noise environment. Mitigation measures would be required to reduce interior noise impacts. These include the installation of mechanical ventilation, like HVAC, and air conditioning so that windows can remain closed, and use of noise-reducing window materials. Both of these measures are consistent with the findings of the Connect Menlo EIR. So the EIR also evaluated a range of alternatives to the proposed project with the objective of avoiding or reducing potential impacts of the project. These alternatives were developed in consultation with city staff and considered the comments received during the NOP scoping period. Under CEQA, alternatives to a project generally must meet the basic objectives of the project. So while there were a number of alternatives that were considered, the EIR included a full analysis of three alternatives in total, one of them being the CEQA required no-project alternative, as well as two development alternatives. So as you'll see in the table, the base-level alternative looks at development on the site under the maximum base residential density allowed in the zoning district without community amenities and without bonus level development. So that would result in 77 fewer residential units than the proposed project, but an increase in commercial space by approximately 5,200 square feet. So while this would reduce some of the impacts compared to the proposed project, it would only be a slight reduction due to reduced development intensity and less construction, but none of the impacts would be entirely avoided, and similar mitigation measures would be required. The second alternative would be the maximum build-out alternative, which looks at development under the site under the maximum, maximum residential density allowed at the bonus level in the zoning district. This would include the same number of residential units as the proposed project, but also an increase in commercial space by about 9,200 square feet. Under this alternative, none of the impacts would be reduced or avoided, and similar mitigation measures would be required. Ultimately, it was determined that in terms of environmental impacts, particularly the base-level alternative, would be the environmentally superior alternative, but it wouldn't meet some of the basic objectives of a project to the same, the same extent that the proposed project itself would. This alternative would also not meet some of the objectives of Connect Menlo to the same degree as the proposed project. So that concludes my overview of the CEQA process and the results of the EIR analysis. Comments will be collected by the city and should be submitted to file as shown on this slide. Even if you make verbal comments tonight, at tonight's meeting, we would also encourage you to submit your comments in writing so that we can thoroughly respond and make sure that we do respond to all of them. And with that, we can take comments.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, Matthew. And Commissioners, do we have questions or comments on the EIR? Mr. DeCarty?
Just a process question. Are we also having public comment on the EIR?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll wait.
All right. Any other questions? I have a couple of clarification questions, although I may or may not suspect the answer. When it's determined that the traffic impact will be not significant, is this due to the comparison of the existing R&amp;D use and its traffic levels? Or is this based on a buy due to the 2016 Connect Menlo EIR?
That is a great question, and one that I will see if Ms. Lee Hee from Kiddlesbrough is on and answer. Second here.
Yeah, hi, everyone. This is Amanda Lee Hee with Kiddlesbrough Associates. And the transportation study, the CEQA impacts, we reviewed the vehicle miles per capita for each of the proposed land uses. So the findings were less than significant, because the proposed project would not exceed the VMT threshold.
In comparison to what?
In comparison to existing conditions. So, or, well, I guess it's not really in comparison to anything. So each of the proposed project's land uses, so the residential land use, the VMT per capita for that proposed land use was evaluated. So the, the, the per capita vehicle miles traveled for a land use within the project's transportation analysis zone, that VMT was pulled from the city's model and was found to be less than the threshold. So the, which, and the threshold is the regional average.
All right. So it's compared not to existing traffic, but to a city model, which presumably was prepared as part of the 2016 Connect Menlo project. Does that sound right?
The, the model has been updated, I believe. I think Kyle, maybe you're prepared to answer this a little bit better.
I can try. And I'll punt it to our transportation team if I need to. But I think what, the, the model itself is the Menlo Park, the city's current model. And you're right, we did work on it as part of Connect Menlo when we did our initial kind of VMT report outs with Connect Menlo. At that time, it was more, those were informational. You know, level of service was still the threshold. We have updated the model, as Amanda said, you know, with more current land uses. We have updated the model, as Amanda said, you know, with more current land uses. I think the important thing that I think you're trying to clarify is VMT, vehicle miles traveled, is different than roadway congestion. It is studying the total vehicle miles traveled from the project, and it's normalized per capita. And it doesn't compare to existing conditions in terms of, is it a change from the VMT at the office or R&amp;D was generating? It's more of, the city's model identifies VMT based on its transportation analysis zones. There's a number of zones within the city. I'm not going to get too detailed here, but basically you find the VMT for that zone, and then you compare the project to that VMT. And the threshold is actually 15% below the regional average. So for this project, it's 13.7, and I have it right over here, 13.7 vehicle miles traveled is the residential land use threshold, but they'd have to be below in order to be less than significant. And then the analysis found that the project's VMT generation with the TDM plan applied would be less than that in terms of the total VMT that each individual or per capita would travel. Does that help?
Well, it helps me hit you back with a question, which is to confirm, since this isn't a real comparison, somehow we are persuading the state that this is a valid way to evaluate this project. So it has to compare to something, and it appears, or I'm inferring here, that a baseline was established with Connect Menlo in 2016 that this shall be the standard VMT for this zone. Now, in order to do that in 2016, was that standard, since it was obviously more VMT or LOS either one, impact than existing conditions, was that justified to the state at that time with mitigations in the Connect Menlo EIR? And thus, that is our baseline, and that's why you can present this project here tonight and say that it is within standards.
So Kristi Ann has joined to basically bail me out here, so I'll turn it over to her. I think I did miss the correct your question there, so I appreciate the clarifying question.
Good evening. Chair Riggs, Kristi Ann Choi, Acting Transportation Manager with the city. And if you might remember, last year, we came to the Planning Commission to update our transportation impact analysis guidelines. And at that time, we established the thresholds that we were going to use to evaluate development projects. So kind of developing what our average threshold was. And so we looked at both an office threshold, residential threshold, and then kind of other types of uses like retail. And so the Office of Planning and Research, the state's Office of Planning and Research, they had given us guidelines on how we could set up those thresholds. And so for residential, we could look at the average VMT per capita for citywide or kind of the region. And so we presented those results, and the the Planning Commission, as well as the City Council, then eventually adopted using the regional average. And then the requirement is 15% below that regional average. So we defined those regional averages back last year, and we used the travel demand model for the city to establish what the average was. So we didn't do this specifically for Connect Menlo. We did it to, we used the model that was developed as part of Connect Menlo. We updated it in order to determine what these averages should be. And then, and then the city, both the Planning Commission and then the City Council then adopted those thresholds.
All right, so this model is not based on history. This base, this model is based on the intended use of the zone.
Correct, yes. It does have our existing land uses in there, though.
All right, so what we know from the information in the EIR is not whether or not the traffic will increase as a result of this project, only whether or not it is within the expectations of the process that we went through refined last year for this kind of development in this zone. So it's reasonable to presume that traffic may increase, but in terms of VMT, we are not determining that at all with the EIR. Is that correct?
Yeah, so now with the VMT as our threshold, then it's focused on reducing the vehicle miles, vehicle miles traveled depending on the type of land use. So in this case, for residential, VMT per capita.
Okay, and that's an understandable goal. It's just that I wouldn't want people to misinterpret that we have followed a guideline that would indicate whether or not we're going to increase traffic. We haven't done that. We've more established whether it will be a reasonable amount of traffic for this type of use. And the city has already asked that it be 15% below an average guideline point, and that we did meet that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's fair. And then, just as an aside, the LOS study, which is not part of the EIR, but as long as it was done by LSA or through LSA, that did find some increases, but mitigations were assigned to that.
Yes, there are some improvements that are are identified to address some of the delays that would be caused by the increase in traffic, but there are some potential feasibility impacts that we'll still need to evaluate.
All right, and then some of these mitigations are doable, but some are in question due to the amount of land or available for right-of-way. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, or there could be other trade-offs as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you all for gathering to clarify that point. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Yes?
This is to the chair. I just want to clarify one, one thing. It's somewhat semantic, but in terms of the level of service, recommend improvement, those aren't mitigation measures. And there's a distinction there because in the draft EIR and the final EIR, if it was to be approved, there would be a mitigation monitoring reporting program that'd be tied to that. And so these would be what we're talking about here for any improvements to intersections for level of service and roadway congestion. Those would need to be added as conditions of approval and their improvement measures to bring it back to existing conditions. But the distinction is more of a legal SEQA distinction I just want to make for everyone's benefit real quick.
Understood. I will not use the term mitigation if I can help it. All right, thank you. Any other questions before we move to public comment? All right. So Kyle and Pyle, if I am correct, we are in a position to take public comment at this point?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So to the public, if you would like to comment on this EIR, we will review the building design later, but at this moment, if you would like to comment on this document during this hearing, this is the time. There is a hand icon on the right side of your screen where the go-to-meeting control panel is. If you click on that hand, it will signify that you would like to make a comment. I will note that one can always make a written comment addressed to the city regarding 111 Independence Drive EIR. That would be received up to and including February 2, if I understand it. But the opportunity to speak publicly tonight is at this moment. Mr. Tapia, do you see anything?
Good evening, Chair Riggs, members of the public. Yeah, at this moment, I'm not seeing any virtual hands or any virtual correspondence being submitted, but we can give it a second or two.
There isn't a large residential population in this area quite yet, but there is going to be. All right. Seeing no, no comments from the public, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for comments, and Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Riggs, and thank you, staff, and the applicant team for presenting us with the information. I want to really acknowledge the utilization of VMT in this project and the benefits that it has. I mean, if we, we go back to level and service, level of service, the LOS, and, you know, often advocated by folks looking along the induced demand pipeline, which is, look, if you just pave and create more lanes of traffic, you can solve your congestion problems. And, but what in fact has been proven is, the more capacity you add, the more people come, particularly with wayfinding and other technological methods, you just fill up that capacity in a heartbeat, and people just go towards that. What VMT does is it disabuses folks of the notion that you can just add capacity, and what it says is, for a particular development, as the acronym stands for, what are the vehicle miles traveled that are going to be associated with that development, given the product type, given the location? And it addresses the different modalities for getting to a particular development, and it it works on many different levels. It works on reducing the amount of cars on the road, it works on mitigating, because you're not adding capacity, the impacts to the climate of traffic. And it also looks and says, look, we, when we build something, we don't know in Menlo Park if the traffic's coming from Redwood City, if the traffic's coming from Mountain View. All anyone needs to do is be on 101, coming from the south and trying to get off in a non-pandemic time, as the Dumbarton Bridge backs up, and you're backed up all the way down 101, we're trying to come along Willow. Interestingly enough, if you look at traffic numbers on Willow pre-pandemic in 2019, and then the numbers for 2016, it's the same amount of traffic that was on Willow Road. The challenge was, because the Dumbarton Bridge was all jammed up, it just felt like there were more cars, but in fact, it was the same amount of cars just moving slowly. So this VMT is a, is the, is the way to accurately assess for specific projects what that specific project is going to do in relation to impacts on the surrounding area. So I'm glad that it's forward. It's taken a while to get here. It was not in place at the time of Connect Menlo, but it's here now. We've got an updated version, and it's it's a wonderful benchmark for a go-forward basis in how circulation works, how traffic works, and how it is we, you know, mitigate some of the climate challenges associated with, with transportation. So I'll add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Any other comments about our EIR? Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I appreciate the conversation about the vehicle and traffic impacts. This is a clarifying question. This is all talking about the mitigation of the Transportation Demand Management Plan put in place by the applicant. Can staff, where are we with that plan? It's, is it, does it exist? Is it specific, or is it saying that a plan that is going to be developed in order to be successful will reach this level?
I will start, and then Matthew can join in. So the applicant did provide a specific transportation demand management plan that was evaluated as part of the transportation analysis for the project, so that becomes part of the project. I don't want to say mitigation, but it is part of the project description. And as part of the conditions of approval of the project, staff will monitor the implementation of the TDM program that the applicant has committed to. So we will have to, on an annual basis, review the implementation of the TDM to make sure that they are fulfilling everything that they said they would be fulfilling. Matthew, you want to add something?
I would, that was perfect, and the only thing I would add is that those specific measures are included on page 4.2-36 of the EIR, as well as the amount of reduction that we anticipate from each of those measures.
Thank you. I appreciate the specific reference. I just, I didn't see it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Suggestions? All right, seeing none. I want to express my appreciation. I know a great deal of work goes into an EIR and a great deal of time. And I particularly appreciate the backup to my challenging question. I think with that, Ms. Bagat, we might want to move on to the study session. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
By the way, if I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly, is it Bagat?
It is, yes.
All right, thank you.
It's Gujarati turned into English, so it can't, it can't be spelled quite correctly, but you're close enough. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I just have a brief, kind of one slight presentation that I would like to run for the study session. It basically outlines the, the topic areas that we would like the commission's comments on, this easing. And Juan, can you get that up?
If I could jump in quickly before we pull up the presentation, I think Leo was about to pull up the agenda, because I think Chair Riggs, if you could formally close the previous item, F2, and then open formally the study session item for record keeping purposes, that would be preferred.
I would appreciate that. Again, I'm limited on my hardware here tonight, so this helps. All right. Having closed the EIR review, we'll move on to item G1, which is the study session. This is a Use Permit, Architectural Control, BMR Housing Agreement, and Environmental Review submitted by SP Menlo LLC, again, for 111 Independence Drive. This is a request for a Use Permit, Architectural Control, BMR, interesting, BMR Housing Agreement, Environmental View, and Density Bonus to redevelop the site with approximately 105 multifamily dwelling units and an approximately 746 square foot commercial space in one building with an above-grade multi-story parking garage integrated into the proposed eight-story building located in the R M U B, that's Residential Mixed Use Bonus Zoning District. So again, the project site currently contains an approximately 15,000-square-foot single-story office building. single-story office building that would be demolished. The proposed building would contain approximately 96,055 square feet of total gross core area. The project would have a floor area ratio that they are of 237.4% for residential uses and 2% for commercial uses. The proposal includes a request for a use permit to modify certain RMU design standards and a request for an increase in height, density and FAR under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. The proposed project would include a BMR housing agreement that requires a minimum of 15% or 14 units of the 92 unit permitted by the zoning ordinance to be affordable. The applicant is proposing to incorporate 13 additional market rate units, which are included in the total 105 per the density bonus provisions in the BMR housing program. That's our chapter 16.96.040, which allows density and FAR bonuses and exceptions to the city's zoning ordinance requirements when BMR units are incorporated into the project. All right, so I will turn that back over to staff.
Thank you Chair. As I was mentioning, if you look at page 29 and 30 of the staff report, staff has outlined specific questions that we would like a response to when, when the commission is reviewing the project design. I would categorize these, went to ahead, sorry. I would categorize these questions in like four groups essentially. The first group being discussing the design changes that were asked, asked by commission at the previous study session that the applicant has undertaken and kind of confirming that this is exactly what the commission was looking for, which includes the treatment of the open space, the architectural design changes and so forth. And within that category, also looking at some of the zoning standard modifications and, you know, favors that the applicant is asking for because of the size conditions and because they are providing affordable units. The second category, I would like the commission to kind of give comments on the size of the commercial space and the use of it as a community amenity. We would like to discuss the community amenity proposal that the applicant has prepared in detail and staff would like specific recommendations from the planning commission on the things, other things that the applicant could provide in order to bridge the gap between the value of the amenity currently provided and the minimum required value that has been determined by the appraisal. Staff would like the planning commission to provide comments on the applicant's BMR proposal. And finally, circling back to the non sequitur, transportation improvement. Staff would like the commission's input on, on the feasibility analysis and whether or not we should be including these improvements as conditions of approval, like any other thoughts that you might have on the overall design. So I will, I will conclude here. We're happy to answer any questions that you, you might have and we would like you to open up this portion also to the community so that they can provide comments on the project design. Thank you.
Indeed. All right, thank you. So let me first ask if there are any clarifying questions regarding the project before I go to public comment. All right, seeing none, and let me check my notes. All right, nothing that can't wait. So we'll go ahead and call for public comment. As typically with our projects, the public may comment. You are invited to speak for three minutes and the way you do that is you look at the right side of your screen and at the go-to-meeting control panel, you will see a hand icon on the edge of it, which if, if you click on that hand icon, that will indicate to staff that you would like to speak on this project. We'll give it a minute. Again, anyone and everyone is invited to speak for three minutes on the subject of 111 Independence Drive design and alternatively, you can type a question in the box at the bottom of the control panel and send that as a chat. Although I would encourage you to send the first couple of letters right away so that we know someone is there. And we'll give it a few seconds more to see if staff receives any indication of someone like wishing to speak.
Good evening Chair. At this moment, I'm not seeing any virtual hands or any virtual correspondence being submitted for this item.
All right. I think we can close public comments and bring it back to the commissioners. Although we have seen this project twice before, it's a very significant project right at the entry to Menlo Park between our two, or two of our new landmark buildings and will be quite visible. It's worthy of our comment. Mr. DeCarty?
So I have a question for staff about the fairly significant back and forth of the valuation of the community amenity. And so I have a set of questions. My first one is, can you help me understand how, given the intent of the community amenity, that an initial proposal would come in that would have that be negative? What, what does that mean?
So I think I can take this one. Since I was more involved before Pyle took over the project, so as the staff report lays out, the, the initial proposal that we received, we had our appraiser evaluate it and determine that it didn't meet the criteria that we have put out in our appraisal instructions. So the city did develop, the Community Development Department and the City Attorney's Office developed a appraisal, set of appraisal instructions to determine how to value the bonus level development for a project. And so we determined that the first iteration submitted by the applicant didn't meet those criteria. And so we then went and had our own appraisal performed by an appraiser, Fabro Moore and Associates. We also prepared other peer appraisals for other projects. So it, it really is about the metrics that go into an appraisal and I'm, I'm not an expert on appraisals, but it really didn't meet the city's appraisal instructions. So that's why we, we determined that was not sufficient and we went with a peer appraisal.
This may be a question for the applicant then, because Mike, I mean, I appreciate you, you don't know necessarily why you got a negative on this, but, but the way I read that is that in order to do bonus level development, the applicant submitted something that said that the community amenity was that the community had to pay the applicant for them to do the bonus level development. I mean, that's what that means, right?
Short answer, yes, that there wouldn't be any value generated by the bonus level and that's why the city rejected it. Not on, on the premise of that, but on the premise that the comparison that was done in the appraisal was not a, a, an appropriate appraisal based on our instructions in terms of how you set the value of the base level and the bonus level of, of that's proposed, base level that's, that could be provided or built and then the market comps and variables that you use. So, you know, without getting into the details, because I'm not, I'm not an expert, like I said, but it really is that that appraisal did not follow the instructions. And so we, we did it. And that's when we had Fabro Moore do another one.
And so they do another one, but then the applicant, but now there's a disagreement off of that one that goes back and forth. And it's, and my understanding is that the, from trying to read this, is the disagreement about, it's not around the cafe, that, that's appraised the same from both of these. It's around the, it's around the two units. And now the question is whether it's the incremental cost of the unit over what would have been built anyway, or some apportioned total cost of those two units. Do I have that discrepancy right? Is that the difference between these two appraisals at this point?
So I think, turn off my announcements. The, there's a couple of things there to, to kind of parse out. Okay, so there's, there's the appraisal, which identifies the required value of the community amenities, which is 50% of the fair market value of the increase, right, in, in terms of the bonus level project. So there's that process first. And so what we're speaking of there is the applicant's appraisal, not proposal, and then our evaluation of it, our determination that it was deficient and getting an appraisal from Fabro Moore and Associates. The second thing in terms of the value of the amenity is a different process. But then there is a proposal from the applicant with the amenity value, and then the city hired BAE to evaluate that proposal. And so I think, I think when you talk about the value of the units, you're talking about the proposal valuation, because the $2.55 million is the fair market value determined by the city's appraiser and accepted by the Community Development Director. And then in, in front of the commission tonight is a question about the community amenity proposal, which we had evaluated from, by BAE to determine the actual value of that amenity. And that's where, if you'll see in the staff report, there is a difference between the $2.55 million required and the amenity value based on the city consultant's evaluation. That helped clarify the two, the kind of process there?
Yeah, I get, I get both pieces, although I still have a question about the second one, but that's fine. Go ahead.
To cover that one, Chris, do you want to hear from the applicant as well?
I, it looked like whoever wants to speak here would be fine.
Yeah, I, I believe that would be appropriate if the applicant would speak also.
Okay, thank, thank you Commissioner or Chair. Nathan, can you pull up the slide that has the community value comparison? I think this would be an appropriate time for that.
Nathan, I gave you permission. Go ahead.
So first, let me address your first question. Certainly, no, we were not asking that, you know, the community provide additional funds or write a check. I think the essence of what that does is show that there is a better ROI, frankly, if we do a base level project than it is if we do a bonus level project. That's fundamentally what that, what that, what that says. And that's, that's still true, but I'm not here to adjudicate, adjudicate that. What this slide does though, what we've done here is compare the amount of the community amenity value between our project and another larger project, which you should be quite familiar with. Let me be clear, the other project is fantastic. It's great. We want you to approve it. We've got nothing to get to the other project. As you can see, our project is 20% inside, but our community amenity value, the ask, is 29% of their community amenity ask. This is not a 9% difference, right? This is almost a 50% difference. What I would like ask the planning commission this evening is if you agree that we, there should be equity here. An equitable amount would be what we show here at the bottom, 1.78, not 2.55. That is taking 20%, the proportional size of the project and applying it, the community amenity value that was applied to the other projects. It was mentioned earlier tonight, the issue of being biased against smaller projects. And this is an example of it at the multi-level, multifamily level. Those of you that have been on the planning commission for a while, have heard me bring this topic up. This is it and, 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 and plain, plain numbers here. So what, I mean, if you look at the totality of our project, all-electric, 35% extra EVSE, three income levels, BMR proposal, minimum auto, maximum bike, no office and a beautiful design. And all we're asking for is equitable treatment when it comes to the community amenity value calculation. And I don't know how to present it kind of in more clear terms. And I'm not even getting right now to the second part of the equation, which is the full cost, the pro-rated cost. But if you just look at this on its face, it's pretty telling, right?
I, I mean, on one level, it's helpful that the comparison, thank you. It, it doesn't, in all honesty, as a, as a planning commissioner who is trying to balance the interests of the community and the interests of the developer, it doesn't help because it, it just raises a question about how good a job we did on another project. So, and we're looking at this one right now. So that's my, my honest reaction in this. I, so would you, so when, when you initially, so why go for the bonus level development then? If it's costing you money, why aren't you just doing a base level project?
It's a fantastic question. I've been asked it numerous times. The truth of the matter is, on our side, we debated this vigorously. So it wasn't a black and white decision. At the end of the day, it was, we're going to go through a process that's going to be difficult. And as a family, at the end of it, do we want a bigger asset or, or a smaller asset? Like I said, it was, it was divided within, within the family, which approach. I wish we had gone the other way, frankly. We would have probably had a, a building by now. Or at least would have been a lot closer. But it was the, let's make a big, let's make a big, big impact. You know, looking at it very, very, very long, long-term, a very long-term view.
All right, I appreciate it.
It's not as simple as it sounds. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, for what we're looking at tonight in the ask of us is the cafe and the two BMR units, an adequate community benefit. And what I was trying to understand is what the underlying disagreement between you all and the city was, it had this multiple back and forth at both of these levels. And I, I think I've driven this as far as I can for now. So thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions or comments regarding this project? Mr. Barnes?
Thank you Chair Riggs. Question to the applicant. With the conversion, the requirement to provide energy power through all-electric methods, what does that do to your cost structure?
What is the, the shift from gas to electric?
Yes.
It, it increased it. That's your question?
Yes. And I'm, I'm sorry, can you not hear me? Is, is my audio is good? Yes, I'm looking for a sense of scale, like to what, because this project goes back a ways, and I suspect you ran numbers prior to the implementation of that requirement, and now you're running numbers. So do you have a sense?
Sure. So I don't, I don't know if I can, yeah, I don't, I don't know if I can right now call out that specific, because there was actually not, there was quite a few changes as we, as we went through this process with respect to additional cost items, not just that it went from, you know, not all-electric to all-electric, but also the EVSE requirements as well. And so there's, you know, the, the, the pro forma sort of evolved, and the costs changed, but I didn't, I didn't identify it specifically that, or at least I don't have a tip of my fingers right now.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
To the chair, if I could jump in before we get to Commissioner DeCarty's question or comment. So I, I think if we could have all commissioners present have their cameras on, that, that I think the city's preference to ensure that everyone knows that we do have a quorum here. I just wanted to quickly jump in for that, because I think there could have been some concerns about only three members participating. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And we did agree to that previously, so appreciate the reminder. Thank you, Mr. Piramo. All right. So again, any questions? Well, comments, Chris?
This is a question, I'm sorry, this is my oversight. The two proposed BMR units that's associated with the community amenity, the new ones, what level are these? Low, very low, moderate?
Low.
Thank you. And then I have a question on the open space. And, you know, if the, if we're supposed to look at four things here, and on the design changes and consideration, I think you've got a really, just a beautifully designed building that's been responsive. I very much like the yin and yang that you've talked about there. I think it looks good. I think that setback looks nice. It's a tough spot. And I think from the way you've laid it out, and the utilization of the open space in the front, to try to sort of bring the street in, those sorts of pieces, looks like it's, it's nicely done. Appreciate you've got utilities and so much to mess with there. My question on the open space is on the back side of the building, and can you just walk through the connectivity to the, to the project next door, and this sort of small strip that's got a bocce court and then some other things in there? And how is that going to feel open? And if there's in fact a grade change, how is that going to be addressed so that people feel secure and comfortable if they're walking that side of the building in order to be able to move across the community?
Guess that one's mine, huh? Yeah, I don't know if we want to get a visual up or not, but one of the things that's happened is that, you know, we do have a lot of space between, between the two buildings. We don't have a lot of setback on our building, but, and the grade change part of it is fairly, fairly minimal. If you go back, well, he'll get the slide up. But as we go from, we go from the bottom right of the plan, as it is right, right there, we'll get there, as we come in, we're basically at the same elevation as the, as the, as the path, there's a, there's a big walkway that's there that also functions as an emergency vehicle access route. So we're contributing, I think, five feet of paving to that and picking up the pattern. And the grade change pretty much stays the same until you get up to keep going right there. That's, it's, so you go all the way back that far, you're still at the same elevation. And after that point, there's a planting separation, and then our grade stays the same, and the grade on the other property starts to go up a bit. I think it only gets to be about two and a half or three feet at its maximum difference. So it's not a, it's not a really large difference in elevation. Their side is a bit higher than ours. And as we go, and we have the, the bocce court that's there, there is some security there, there's a fence there, that you go through a gate where that dark line is. Then we, then there's a paved zone through it. So we are relying on the open space that's beyond visually, and that the building is, you know, the adjacent building is not right up next to the property line. It's quite a good distance away. So I think there's good, good light and good air through there. And as you, as you turn the corner, we're in a similar condition where there's a long, you already know that project, but there's all, there's a long path that comes in right around that zone. You can see the paving pattern. Maybe can you blow it up a little bit more? It's very faint, at least on my screen. I want to just make sure it's visible. And then, let's see the top, the off-site portion to the top. Yeah, you can see that, you see those diagonal kind of patterns, and that's part of the big open space connection that goes all the way off the sheet that's part of the other site. So that area is also open. And there's a, and there's a potential, there's a connector possibility there as well, the sliding gate that can be opened during the day and closed at night, which would be right about where, I don't know where the cursor is now, but right about where all that 10-foot setback language is written on the plan, right around in there is where the connection would be between sites. And we've, we've got it sorted out so that there's a way to get the grade to happen, a grade change to happen there. That's, that's, that's how that would work. So it's, it's, it's a more urban sort of an open space, without any doubt. But we think that's just a, it's a portion of the open space provided. We have the big podium deck above as well, which is sort of the prime open space for, for other recreational uses. There we go.
Yeah, I appreciate, I mean, I think it's got great open space for the residents. I was asking, I'm interested just for, for, you know, people in the community. And so if you come on that side, you essentially are committed to that open space for the community until you get to that gate at the bocce court, and then that's now just for residents. Is that correct?
That's right.
And then that continues around the corner, and like that basketball court and everything else is just for residents?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's helpful.
Public would walk through on the adjacent sites' open space and to be able to go through.
Right. So you're not helping out a whole lot there, that they just happen to be able to see there with the gate. Okay.
That's right.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you to the chair. Those are my other couple of questions. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Other comments or questions? All right, I'll go ahead and ask a couple. So this may not be an issue at all, but it's the kind of thing, it sort of seems a good idea to ask before the project is built. I mean, having studied in school, the accidents of the Prudential Insurance Tower in Boston from the 1960s, design doesn't always predict what nature will do. So we have a somewhat faceted facade, even though this is certainly not an all-glass building. We have 10 of the 12 window groups on the fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh floors that, or maybe it's five, six, seven, eight, that are arranged in a curve, and any curve has a focal point. So given that there is a southerly aspect to the building facade, has there been a study to see, just what is the focal point of reflected light off of any group of windows? Is there a time of year and a time of day where it hits a certain part of landscaping or cuts a path across landscaping, or even across parking or, or approaching vehicles, where multiplying the impact of a direct solar reflection by 10 might be a hazard?
Nathan, you're under.
I can't hear you, Nathan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We did a little bit of work on this, so we got a presentation that we can put together. You guys, you got me reaching into my physics and calculus days, but let's see what I can find. So we looked at this very closely, because it is a very serious deal that we want to really pay attention to. And going back through time here, there's two ways you can do a curve like this. There's a true curve, which is a spherically shaped mirror, for instance, or you can do a parabolic mirror. With a parabolic mirror, you end up getting a focal point, one, because you can focus it on to that point. When you do an actual true curve, like what our building is, you get many focal points. It's called spherical aberration. So instead of one focal point that could actually melt a car or tire, you have many points which will distribute the sunlight. It doesn't get as intense, so we don't have that concern as much. And what we did do is we looked at one of the focal points of what that arc would be, and if you just take an arc and use some real simple physics math down here, your focal point lands basically on the center of Independence Drive, and will just skate along that road for a very short duration of the day. There's no parking there. It's on the street, so it's not hitting the landscaping adjacent.
Okay.
I, I think we're okay.
All right, good. Well, we looked at it. I think that's the, that's the appropriate and proper thing to do.
Yeah.
Thank you. And the all-electric backup generator, just what is that?
Um, I, I think I'm a little confused with all-electric generator.
Well, you have an all-electric site. Is your backup generator gas-powered?
Oh, there's no generator on this site.
Okay, so if the PG&E power goes out, it's just dark?
Nathan, it's, I'll help you out. It's John Ennis. I'm not going to show my screen, but I'm here. The backup, the emergency lights, so lights on the exit paths would be on battery backup. Those are either batteries built into each light or a small room that has enough batteries to run the exiting, exit lights, corridor lights, stair lights, and things like that. But yes, essentially, you wouldn't be able to cook or watch TV, but the, the lighting would allow you to exit through the stairs. Due to the height of the building, we don't need an emergency generator for elevators or things like that. We're not high-rise.
Okay. That's wonderful. I had remembered six floors being a cutoff, but I guess it's, what, 96 feet or something before you have to?
75 feet to the top occupied floor.
Okay. Excellent. And then, speaking of height, the building looks really neat and clean, like the Bohannon Building, that it relates to. Is there any rooftop equipment that I'm not seeing?
The, the project does have rooftop equipment, including air conditioner and condenser units, but we do have high parapets that do block that, meet your guys' design intent.
Okay, so the parapets, as shown, are enough to screen that?
Correct.
That is terrific. You go up 101 and see some lovely new buildings that are probably anywhere from 11 to 16 feet floor to floor, and then you see a 20-foot-high roof screen, and it diminishes the building, to say the least. And then has, have you studied, since you will be addressing transportation management, have you studied what public transit could serve at a particular level for the building? In other words, if, if you set a target of 50% of residents being able to do 90% of their travel without using an automobile, is that something achievable?
I just think we're not here, who's going to answer that question? I, you know, we really have not done that type of study. You know, we expect that quite a few people will use public transportation, and due to the car ratio, there'll be, you know, fewer, obviously fewer people driving every day, and there'll be probably other alternate modes of transportation due to the nearby offices, cycling, scootering, things like that, and some Uber and Lyft.
Well, this perhaps is a challenge for staff, but your last words are exactly what were on my mind. Diversion to public transit, in my mind, does not include Uber and Lyft. Uber and Lyft is an automobile. The main difference between having your car parked on Level 2 and driving three miles into Redwood City to your job, and calling Uber or Lyft is that Uber comes to you and then takes you where you want to go. So there's a certain additional element of travel. Typically, when I call Lyft, the vehicle that responds is two to three miles away. So I think that this might be a challenge to staff that is not necessarily tied to this project, but could use this project as a sampling, would be to see just what we can achieve when we set our diversion goals, or when we accept a TDM program. To, to what likely degree are we reducing that VMT? So I'll throw that out there as a, sort of a separate question that we, you know, if it's possible to gather that data without making it a city council-funded project, that could be very, I think, helpful to us. So, no response required, I guess. And then, finally, we will see this project again, am I correct? Miss Quaidah?
That's the staff?
Yes. So staff is not expecting the commission to take any action tonight. Once we prepare the final environmental impact report, staff will come back to the commission for the certification of the environmental report, and then action on the project.
Probably at the same meeting?
Yes, probably at the same meeting.
All right. So I would like to ask if we could have a rendering or two from street eye level of the approach around, around the entrance of the building. I ask that because as much as I admire this building, its surfaces, the color palette, the shapes, both in plan and in elevation, and particularly the transparency of the first level. The first level is not actually quite at pedestrian level, and it's not at pedestrian reach. So it is also important to know what the finished materials and massing of the front landscape design are. Paul, I'm going to be terribly embarrassed if you Paul, I'm going to be terribly embarrassed if you already have that in the, in the drawings for today. But I don't recall, for example, what finishes on the sort of rose-tone material that's pretty much just off of the entryway. And could we see more on that?
Are you talking on the building or in the landscaping?
No, the front landscaping.
The overall?
Okay.
Or hardscaping, as we say.
Yeah, I think in 2019, we had some, we had some SketchUp, SketchUp views of that. We can update those. I don't know that they've been updated, but yeah, that can be done.
I'll call it, what, sidewalk, sidewalk, front plaza, walking, walking eye view, something like that. I suspect we're really going to like it, but I'd I'd love to, to actually see that. And I think other commissioners would like to see it, too. That's some of my comments. While I'm chatting, was there, were there any other thoughts from the other commissioners? Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. I must say, when this project came back for the EIR, I went back on the website and plugged in 111 to try to find if this was the same project we had seen two or three years ago. It was, it's been so long since we've seen this. And I think that the project has held up well over multiple reviews. I think that the, the form is interesting. And I think the form is suited for that irregular-shaped lot. And I do remember from the first to the second to the second to the third iteration, and I think some clear changes to the, to the approachability of the building has helped it. So I think it's, you know, tweak here, tweak there, close to being ready to go from an architectural design review standpoint. Can't answer the questions as it relates to, you know, the fairness of the assessment of the community amenity piece of it in terms of disparities between bigger projects and smaller projects. But from a design review standpoint, well done. And I think we're getting very close. And I appreciate Commissioner Riggs's commentary on it. And the same, Commissioner Cale isn't here, but I value his opinions as well. But good work up to this point, and I'm certainly favorable towards it. Thank you.
Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I'll do the same thing. I'll touch on the four points. As I said before on the design piece, I'd echo Commissioner Barnes. Appreciate Commissioner Cale's and Riggs's expertise, but in general, I think it fits nicely on the design side. I like Commissioner Riggs's points about the street-level sort of pedestrian feel on the front side. And as I echoed on the backside with the open space, just making sure that that actually looks comfortable for people to be able to walk back through there. That is the whole point on the pedestrian connectivity. So that was the first category. The second category, I don't know about the total valuation question after that back and forth, but a cafe is on the list, and you all have been engaged a lot with the community. And if the community input is that a cafe works really well, then that seems supportable. And the other pieces, adding the BMR units, I think that makes a lot of sense, too. We, you know, that's the huge, huge problem for us here, and the more you can get, the better. So that also seems like, for me, a reasonable alternative in that mix. So off of the list of community amenities, that combination, I think in general, seems as, as it can be useful and helpful. The BMR proposal, that you would actually go across the tiers, that also seems good. We've got to get very low and figure that one out. It's hugely difficult to make happen. And so that seems like a nice approach. And then finally, staff asked about the non-sequitur transportation pieces of this. And yes, I think we need to look at it. I think the, the long-term transportation issues and the congestion in that community are ongoing. And absolutely looking at the way that you're talking about makes sense. And having just taken a moment to review, thank you for the page citing the TDM plan as it exists right now. It's a pretty passive plan. It just relies on what is existing in the construction, the density, the lack of parking, that sort of piece. And so to Commissioner Riggs's point, I think there's a lot to do with how you can actually proactively implement a TDM plan, including whatever marketing. There's lousy marketing and there's good marketing to get people not to use cars and to do that well. And I think that can be looked at as well in that mix. So hopefully that addresses the feedback on the four points. Overall, I think the project's headed in the right direction. I appreciate the frustration the applicant has had with some of the back and forth on this, but I think it's going to be a really nice addition to the community.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes, thank you. I did, I am remiss in talking to the community amenity and the selection of a cafe. It's, to me, and I'd love to hear the applicant's thinking behind this. It's an awfully odd place to put a cafe. If you think about it, it fronts a cloverleaf out to one-on-one. And it doesn't seem to me to be a draw or be servicing central parts of the community, given its location. And one thing that I am sensitive to as it relates to community amenity is, I'll draw a distinction between a tenant amenity and a community amenity. A tenant amenity ends up making the applicant's project better. And it often can benefit the folks that are living there. But it's a different spirit than a community amenity. Community amenity needs to serve non-residents. So I'm, I'd love to hear from the applicant, how this, how that community amenity selection serves, given location, and some of the things I stated. Would that be permissible, Commissioner Riggs, to ask for some feedback on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Paul, do you want to describe sort of how the cafe works, both with the interior and exterior as well? I don't think we've covered that in, in a while. Because that really connects both the publicly accessible open space with the cafe as well.
Sure. Yeah, the, I think there's two, two kind of points that you're getting at. The way the cafe works, I mean, we have, there's the exterior portion of it that I think people will see as they drive by and walk by. And to the extent it's, it's more than just a tenant amenity, I mean, 105 units doesn't support a cafe by itself. But the overall community, which will become much more, which will have much more of a walking district feel to it as it develops. I mean, there's a massive number of housing units you're going to be talking about later on tonight. And there are other ones as well. They're going to bring a lot of residents to this space. And you have a lot more people walking and biking and being in, in the community, being able to utilize this, this new amenity. You know, it's a, it's a small, it's a small space. It has, its interior is very visible from the street. It's got its own sort of grand stair and ramp to get you there. And a sort of prominent zone for people to be able to eat outside, which will be unmistakable as a, you know, eating spot. And then it will have more appeal to the neighborhood than just to the folks that live here.
Can you pull up so that we can see the parcel and then get a feel for two things? What are the surrounding uses? And then what's the circulation, the pedestrian circulation like in and around in the building?
Well, I think what's, what's key here is it's not necessarily that what exists today, we're really going to where the puck is going. As Paul mentioned, in and of itself, certainly this building.
Talk to what's planned there, in that area.
Can we get that in now?
Is there, I mean, staff might have a better slide for this. Staff report.
Could I recommend figure 3.1 from the EIR is, is possible? That's on, 3.1 is, I think, on LSA's page 3.2. We also, Kyle, have the map that was prepared at my request for December, which shows uses, which shows the the zone by uses, you know, residential office and so forth, color keyed. I don't know whether that would be on the memory of the computer, for example.
So I, I can probably, if I can share my screen, I can probably make that happen. But hang on, let me find it first. If you'd give me a second, okay?
And while you're looking, I will contribute to this in that I had a similar question. I wasn't going to raise it because there had been discussions with community leaders, albeit Bellhaven is not particularly close to this project. If anything, the North Pharaohs and Laurel Island suburban neighborhoods are probably more proximate to this project. And the new, new buildings on the other side of Marsh Road along the creek. But I had been assuming that the two new Bohannon Buildings, including the hotel, would provide some population for this cafe because the project that's on our agenda for later tonight is not really a comfortable and easy walk to this cafe. It's just not adjacent. And that project is the most proximate housing. So I think, Paul, when you're referring to additional population, you must be talking about workforce population, not residential. Is that correct?
I'm talking about both, actually. I mean, yes, absolutely workforce population, but we have a, there's another residential project directly adjacent to our site. And there's, there's another one in the works a little bit further down, Independence, that would also bring people into it. All, all different kinds of uses would contribute to this. And I think it becomes a little destination spot. It sits up above the street, so you kind of have a, you're not, you're not, it's a little bit more of a commanding location. And it's, it's a small-scale space, so it's not, you know, it's not going to have 100 people in it. But it doesn't, it doesn't need that level of, of activity to be, to be active, I think, so. Yeah, I don't know, this, this, I don't know, this plan on the screen particularly helps, but maybe it does in the overall neighborhood look, but.
Everything that we see there in the light blue is all potential.
It's mixed use, yeah.
Mixed use, right.
Right, right.
With a heavy, if you look at what's planned, it's a heavy residential.
But I think all the uses would contribute to, towards making that cafe successful. You know, the daytime, daytime users and evening users, and maybe even weekend.
And Kyle and I'll, if we, I believe this has gone through a selection and preference project across, process across the last two years, is that correct? With the community?
So in, in terms of community may in general or this project specifically?
This project, yeah.
So, I mean, the applicant may be able to touch on any outreach they may have done. In terms of the city, the, this process, we've been through a couple of public meetings, and community may have been discussed at those meetings. So those would be the avenues for outreach for this project specifically. You know, in terms of community input through these public hearings, public meetings, as well as notices, updates to the website. But we have not had a, a project where it's going to be a city-sponsored meeting on the project specifically about the community may, with the exception of in these study sessions.
Oh, okay. And most of those have been populated by a neighborhood that is a couple of miles to the east, not actually participating, I think, in this end of. All right. So I guess that was worthwhile bringing up. Yeah.
Were you mid-sentence? Oh, okay. Yeah, I just, my understanding of the community amenity process is, you know, it's not baked until it's baked. And so while there may be merit to a cafe here, we've seen ever, we've seen a preponderance of projects try to come forward with restaurants with cafes because that is a nice, clean, neat community amenity to put in your project because it's, you know, it helps the project in itself. So I don't, I want to be careful because it isn't baked yet that this is the community amenity. It is the suggestion of the applicant. And Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, as it stands right now, there's, there's a more involved process for determining what that community amenity will be. And is it even the planning, is it the planning commission's purview? Or do community amenities get selected in the end by council?
That's a good question. So the community amenities are evaluated alongside the project by, you know, the planning commission and whatever entity is the final decision-making body. This project, the planning commission makes the final decision on the project. So the appropriateness of a community amenity at this location in terms of, you know, the package of amenities would be part of the planning commission's purview on the overall entitlements here. So we are looking for feedback tonight on the current proposal. As mentioned previously, also kind of ways that the proposal could be brought into compliance with the $2.55 million determination by the city's community development director. So those would be two questions that we, we framed in the staff report that we'd be looking for feedback on. Because ultimately, the planning commission will be evaluating the final proposal alongside the final EIR.
So as a study session, you're looking for feedback, I'm sorry to be redundant, for the appropriateness of the community amenity being proposed. And you're not looking for us to solve for the delta in the $2.5, $2 million and change. You're looking for the applicant to come up to that number. And that's not necessarily, that's not necessarily a leverage point for the commission, correct?
Well, the commission certainly can provide their feedback on some ways that the applicant could, could bring the community amenities up into compliance with the $2.55 million amount. That is definitely part of the planning commission's recommendation as a study session, or sorry, purview in terms of the study session tonight to provide feedback to the applicant to consider in ways that they can modify, refine their community may proposal. You know, and just to go back to the amenities themselves, we are working off of the adopted list, which is the list that's in effect currently. That was adopted by the council alongside Connect Menlo. And we are using that list, that's the current list. I'm getting a little feedback.
Right, and it is a first-come, first-served list. So if these guys get in first, then, and they check the box and pick it off the list. So if these guys get in first, then, and they, they check the box and pick it off the list, you know, next guy has to pick something else. The next guy, the next entity has to pick something else. In a sense, that's the, that's the nature of the beast, correct?
Correct. With the exception of the affordable housing component, where, where intent was that as an amenity used, it's off the list.
And then, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Riggs, may I continue with a question?
Yes, please.
So getting back to the, that 2 million and change number, the input is not necessarily, or request the staff to reduce that number. It's, it's brainstorming about how the amenities, the value of the amenities or the amenities contributed can get up to that number, not necessarily a discussion about bringing down that number, correct?
Correct. And also I'd say that the city evaluated the value of the proposed amenities too. And I'd say those are also set. So the city's valuation of the BMR unit and the cafe space, if it was to be included, those are set alongside the 2.55 million. It's really that delta kind of ways that that could be bridged. Not modifying the $2.55 million. That, that's been accepted by the city's community development director. And, and going back to just touching on some of the earlier comments to kind of help explain, every project is unique and different. There's different land use inputs, different different components of the project, you know, for sale townhomes versus apartments. There's different comps that get taken into account. So it's really, it's a difficult comparison project by project. It really is the, the value of the proposed project increase in gross floor area. And you do use comps, but there are different comps, different product types, different components within each project. So I do want to make, make that clear to kind of tie back to a comment earlier on.
So I'll wrap up my thoughts. I mean, it is first come, first served. I'm not convinced yet, I couldn't be persuaded, persuadable certainly, that the cafe was the right thing for that. It doesn't strike me first blush as something that makes a ton of sense, but I'm certainly persuadable to that. And then the question, Commissioner Riggs, Chair Riggs, that I think we would be interested, I certainly would be interested to hear from the applicant is, to bridge that gap, does the applicant have any ideas? If that number is a static number, and then if the decision on behalf of the applicant is base or bonus? And if they choose bonus as their path for development density, do they have an idea for bridging that? Because that seems to be the question that's being proposed is something needing feedback.
I'm, I'm sorry, Andrew, I may not have fully followed what it is that the applicant can do in, in response to your question.
So as I'm understanding it from, from Mr. Parada, there is the distance between what they're offering, right? From the cafe plus the BMR units. And does that equal the $2.5 million? And if, if it does not in aggregate value, what would, and it needs to get there in order to do a bonus development, what would be the proposal for bridging that gap?
Yeah, that's, I, I think that's fair enough. In fact, I suspect that that is going to happen, whatever we say or ask, or it won't move past staff to the next level. I think that's so.
Being that this is a time to see, one of the, being that the value add we can provide to the commission is to see if we can further that discussion. May I ask the applicant if they have any ideas on that?
Yes, certainly.
If the applicant.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello? So in, in terms of kind of ignoring the, the equity comment, if you will, and what we would do, the problem is the gap. The gap is rather significant. And this, you know, given all the composition of this project, it's, it's very, very challenging project. It really, really is. So the, we, we are in a position to do one more low BMR. But the whole, the whole, I mean, the, you know, the risk to the project is, is the risk to the project going forward. That, that's kind of part of the collective equation, especially in today's, today's climate. That's the only thing we've, we've looked at and the only thing we've considered.
All right. There we go.
Is it safe to, is it safe that, this is Andrew Barnes again. Is it safe to assume that should you not be able to come up with what for you is an appropriate bridge? You would, well, you'd do whatever you're going to do, one of them being build at base and one of them not proceeding with the project. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. So Mr. Doran, you have a comment? Yeah. Oh, I apologize. Mr. Doran, before I get your comment, I'd like to note that we have reached 10 o'clock. And I believe our expectation is generally to adjourn by 11:00. I would need concurrence of our commission, a forum, in order to plan to proceed past 11:00. So if I can take a moment to ask Mr. Parada, our next scheduled item on tonight's agenda in two parts, I am suspecting we cannot, we cannot make it through both parts of that agenda. Would you like to address the EIR only when we get there? And I hope we'll get there in 10 minutes.
So I, I've been keeping track of the clock because I had a feeling this might come up. We, we do have a constraint with the number of meeting limits for a housing project under SB 330 for Menlo Uptown. And so we do need to get to that project tonight and get through it. So I think maybe we can confer as staff in ways that we can tighten up the presentations, ask the applicants to kind of breeze through them a little quicker than, than normal. The LSA's presentation will have some redundancy with the previous one, but we did want to include that for any members of the public that may have joined late. So we can try to, try to get through that quickly. But I think we do need to, to go past 11:00 and then I apologize. But we, we do need to hear that item tonight. Otherwise, we run into a number of meeting limit issue where we're capped. And we do need the fifth meeting for that one for the city council.
So I have, I have a definite drop off at 11:00. I'm on East Coast hours for work and I have to be up at 3:30 in the morning. So I'm, I'm out at 11:00.
All right. Does anyone else have to bail at 11:00? All right. So we'll still have four commissioners past 11:00.
To, to respond, so if we can wrap up 111 and then, 111, excuse me, should not use my shorthand, and then move into Menlo Uptown, I'll, I'll check in with our city attorney's office while we're getting that started to see if, if we can get through one portion and potentially hear the study session and another meeting. Let me, let me confirm on that one. But if we can plan to have at least four commissioners attend through both items, I'll see if, if there's a way that we have the flexibility in case that second component of it runs longer than we anticipated.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then, Mr. Doran, I apologize for that diversion. Back to you.
No problem. I, I'd just like to reflect briefly on the four questions that they ask of us. As far as the site layout, I think it's, it's really good, actually. I particularly like the open space on the right hand side and the way it plays off the adjacent property. I think it's important that these buildings not form kind of a street wall. The blocks are long out here. And I think having something inviting between the buildings adds to the overall neighborhood. So I, I like the site layout. I'm a fan of the architectural design. I, I think that it's appealing. I like the change, I like the color change. And I particularly like the way it plays off the hotel near, next to it. And again, builds kind of a sense of community out there. As far as the cafe and the suitability, I don't have much to add to that conversation. And I didn't want to take up a lot of time. I will say in respect to the last question about the gap in community amenities, I think it's important that the value be reached. If they want to build to the bonus level, they need to get to the required level of community amenities. I'm sorry if the developer feels that that may endanger the project. But I, I think that our whole, our whole scheme, bonus development and community amenity are making exceptions to it. If this project doesn't get built during this cycle of this year because of COVID, that's unfortunate, but this site will get developed. And there's, we've got plenty of other development going on right now. So I, I just find that, that last comment, you know, not, not helpful. If they, as far as filling the gap with another BMR unit, that to me is, is not, is fine. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. But I think we do have to get to $2.5 million number. Or we, you know, we just can't allow building at the bonus development level. That seems to me very simple, simple decisions.
All right. Thank you. And I want to close similarly on staff questions. Sorry, my iPhone is doing backup duty and keeps screwing off. So I think other commissioners have covered the, the bulk of the issues well. I wanted to make, I wanted to comment just on two items. One is the prompt regarding the use permit for design standard modifications. The applicant has indicated that the concave upper floors and the recessed, I'm going to call it the third and fourth bays, are their equivalent of the required major offset in the facade. And I would like to support that. In fact, I'm always glad to see a project that does not follow that prescription literally. We had three, maybe four approved projects, each of which followed that literally with a less than satisfactory result. And then regarding the parking and height waiver, I think that's consistent with what we've asked for in both cases. We asked the parking be reduced and we asked that the, we invited a bonus level that would allow for height. So between that and the rather admirable overall sighting and sighting and design, I think this is a project that in, in the next few months is headed for approval. We can resolve that financial issue. So that completes my comments. And if, if there are no others, I think that would be the end of the study session. All right. So thank you all for staying for a long meeting and for the extensive work involved in this project. Our next item. Yes.
Through the chair? Before you open this item, it sounds contradictory right now, but can we take a five minute break to allow us as staff to collect or connect quickly with, with our, our city attorney's office to ensure that we handle this next item correctly? We need to determine if we open it, kind of implications there and then also the timing. So I know, I know we're trying to finish it tonight. But if we have five minutes, take a break and then call the meeting back to order it. Maybe, maybe make it eight minutes. 10:20 would probably be good if we could do that.
Absolutely. Yeah, let's spend no more time discussing it. But I would like to be ready before 10:20 if that's possible. So would commissioners please be in attendance, say in five minutes, 10:17, just in case Kyle and Tom can resolve something? And, or at least be within earshot of your computer. And we'll, we'll gather again in five to seven minutes then. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will recharge my computer. Kyle, did you have any luck?
So I did talk to, to our city attorney. And so we, we do need to move forward with the meeting. So we will do our best to tighten up all the presentations and get the draft EIR hearing going. And then for the study session, what you could do to ensure that if anyone's in the public, I don't like doing this, but you could say that they could get, give comments during the draft EIR and on both the draft EIR and the study session if, if someone is in the tenants but can't remain for the study session item. So we could also kind of help with public comment that way.
I do think we need to do it. Yes. All right, well, if, if we're in a position, let's start the EIR. And let me expand this a little bit. We are reconvening our commission hearing. This is with item F3. This is a draft environmental report, public hearing. Applicant Andrew Morcos for 141 Jefferson Drive and 180 to 186 Constitution Drive, also known as Menlo Uptown Project. This public hearing is to receive public comments on the draft EIR for the proposed Menlo Uptown Project consisting of 483 multifamily dwelling units, comprised of 441 rental units and 42 for sale townhouse units, and approximately 2,940 square feet of office uses located on the ground floor of one of the proposed buildings. The project site is located in the RMUB, that is the residential mixed use bonus zoning district. The draft EID, excuse me, EIR identifies less than significant effects in the following topic areas. Population and housing, transportation, greenhouse gas emissions. The draft EIR identifies less than significant effects with mitigation for the air quality and noise, that's operational traffic and stationary noise topic areas. The California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, requires this notice to disclose whether any listed hazardous waste sites are present at the location. The project location does not contain a hazardous waste site included in a list prepared under section 65962.5 of the government code. The city previously prepared an initial study for the proposed project that determined that the following topic areas would have no impact. Less than significant impacts or less than significant impacts with mitigation measures, including applicable mitigation measures from the Connect Menlo EIR. And those areas would be aesthetics, agriculture, forestry resources, biological resources, cultural resources, energy, geological and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, mineral resources, noise being construction period, groundboard vibration and aircraft related noise, as well as public services, recreation utilities and service systems, tribal cultural resources and wildfire. Written comments on the draft EIR may also be submitted to the community development department at 701 Laurel Street, Menlo Park, no later than 5:00 PM on February 2 of this year. Give this to Mr. Smith, I believe this is your project.
Pretty much here rigs and planning commission members. So some of this will be very similar to what you just went through. So we'll try to make it as, as brief as possible. If we can move into the first presentation. Okay. So I have here a map of the project site. You can see the project site outlined in red here. The orange parcels shown on this map are zoned RMUB residential. And just for a little bit of context, the project that you were just discussing is located on this parcel. So distance away from it, it is a 4.83 acre site. And as mentioned, it's zone RMUB. There's a Paseo, which is the blue dotted line that runs through the center of the project site. And the redevelopment of this site, which is currently occupied by office and industrial buildings, would result in the construction of 483 residential units and 2,140 square feet of office space for nonprofit uses. Seventy-three of the units would be for BMR, below market rate households. And the project would be providing community amenities to construct at the bonus level of development. As with the previous project, there are two public hearings this evening. One is a draft environmental impact report, public hearing, which is the opportunity to comment on the focus draft EIR for the project. And then the second portion will be a study session, very similar to what was just done to provide feedback on the overall project, BMR housing proposal and community amenities proposal. There were two previous study sessions for the project held in February of 2019 and December of 2019. So this will be the commission's third look at the project. I want to reiterate that there are no actions being taken this evening. There is a public comment period currently open, which ends February 2. And after that, staff and our EIR consultant will review and respond to all substantive comments in the final EIR for the project. And at that time, the planning commission will consider the final EIR and land use entitlements and make a recommendation to the city council, who will be the approving body because the project includes a major subdivision. And so I won't go through this whole format, but essentially it's the same format that we just went through for the other projects. So we'll start with the draft EIR public hearing. I will turn it over to the applicant for presentation at this time, followed by the EIR consultant. And then we can go from there with public comments and commissioner questions and comments. So for the applicant, Gray Star, I believe Andrew Morcos will be starting out the presentation.
Yes, planning commissioners, thank you for having us tonight and this late schedule. We appreciate you accommodating us as much as possible. Hoping our presentation will come up here soon. My name is Andrew Morcos. As Tom said, I am the senior development director for Gray Star in Menlo Park. And we are here presenting Menlo Uptown, 441 rental multifamily units and 42 townhomes between Constitution and Jefferson, just east of Chrysler in the Bayside area. On the next slide, you'll see the location of our project. And as I said, it's located between Jefferson and Constitution, just east of Chrysler. On the following slide, I'm going to not have you or I read through this, but basically I wanted to highlight the comments that were made at the last planning commission meeting and since then through our community outreach. They sent it around these six items, but can be summarized in affordable housing, community amenity, public art, materials and refinement of renderings, and Dumbarton rail involvement. And I'll focus most of my time on the community amenities because I think this is, that's what I'm really excited about. That's what has come from all the community outreach that we've done. And it's also come from the report by UC Berkeley NY Plan titled Investment and Disinvestment as Neighbors. So as a summary, the total value of the community amenity as determined consultant is 8.9 million. And we're recommending that that 8.9 million is accounted for through 2,940 square feet of ground floor community space that will be donated to a nonprofit supporting community land trusts in Bell Haven and Menlo Park. The remainder 4.4 million additional funds would go directly and immediately to support the preservation of housing and affordable housing and prevention of displacement in Bell Haven, where it's been a significant issue as detailed in the report by UC Berkeley. So what this does is it offers high quality, permanent affordable housing integrated into the Bell Haven community, which I think along with the affordable housing that's in our project is a significant compliment. And this is born straight from both that report and from the community's input. One of the great things about community land trust is that the board, who control kind of decision-making and flexibility, is made up of, you know, usually three different groups of people. One is the community land trust residents, so the people living in the affordable housing. The second group is residents from the greater community. And the third is technical experts, so experts in community land trust, governance, in tenant support, people that can help make sure that the community land trust is run efficiently and compassionately. This slide is just a little bit more detail on community land trusts. It's really about facilitating the preservation of affordable units in the communities where they need them the most and promoting affordable housing production by developing a land and keeping that land in perpetuity for affordable housing. Go on to the next slide. I'll skip over this. This is just an increase in the space that was allocated. And then quickly through the EIR. The main thing from the EIR is that it does not identify any significant unavoidable impacts. And our comment period closes on February 2. We look forward to any comments at this meeting. And, and if anyone out there can, is watching this, wants to speak to us directly, please reach out. We're happy to have one-on-one meetings as well. With that, I'll hand it over to Clark Manis, our architect on the DL, to quickly run through the multifamily and townhome progression.
Thank you, Andrew. So commissioners, thanks at this late hour. I'll keep my comments very concise here. So the first image that's in front of you was one that you saw in December 2019 and reflect the comments that you provided on the creation of the park at the Constitution frontage. Next. So as a result of that, and recently with the comments that you've shared with us, we've continued to refine, refine the project. And the three renderings that you'll see here are a depiction of the multifamily, the combined site and the townhouses. The next one. The aerial rendering demonstrates the importance of the organizing principle of the Paseo and the relationship of the public open space to the buildings. And the western side of the Paseo, as you know, accommodates the seven story U-shaped multifamily buildings with elevated courtyards. And the eastern side on the left is really the relationship of the Paseo to the townhouses. And David Burton, if you need, can talk about the townhouse a little bit more detail. Karen, our landscape architect, will also address some of the issues that have been raised by staff on the open space in terms of its amenity. Next. Next. So next, one more. So the following three plans depict, as you've seen before, the ground floor, parking and courtyard plans for the multifamily building. Active uses front both the Constitution and the Jefferson Street frontages. And as you remember, automated parking is screened from use and elements like bicycle parking along the Paseo helped to screen it. Perhaps mostly really by intent, the community benefits base that Andrew touched on fronts both the street and the Paseo. And we believe it really further reinforces the potential at the upper levels. So the multifamily building, the massing does provide the setbacks in the key locations that we've identified. Next. 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 And then lastly, there was some discussion as a result of the comments that you've shared with us on the materiality of the building. These renderings and the ones that you've seen before depict the multifamily and the townhouses in terms of the range of materials that we're proposing. Warm colors on the exterior facades that help to unify the site expression. And on the interior courtyards and the upper level setbacks, you can see there are light colors to provide enhanced sunlight exposure. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Karen to highlight some of the issues associated with the open space.
Thank you, Clark. So as a reminder, the Uptown Project is a cohesive site connecting the multifamily and townhome sites, specifically with the Paseo design. We have worked to incorporate your comments. Revisions include an expanded multi-use lawn areas, spaces for artwork, for public artwork, seating elements, strong connections and as well as strong connections to the townhome site. We believe we have incorporated all the comments that we have previously received. And we thank you for having the design and development team present tonight for your thoughtful feedback throughout the review of this project. Thank you.
And so with that, through the chair, I believe we can move into the presentation by the EIR. And so with that, through the chair, I believe we can move into the presentation by the EIR consultant for the project.
Yes, please.
Hello again. Matthew was all I'll say. We do have the same project team for EIR from Menlo Uptown. As well as, and so again, Teresa Wallace is with me as well as Miss Amanda Lee from Killington. This presentation will be pretty similar to the one you just heard for 111 Independence. You also have an opportunity to write your comments at the end. In the interest of time, I'll move through this presentation a little bit quicker. So I would encourage any member of the public that just joined us or joined us late to go back and watch the recording of the EIR presentation for 111 Independence to supplement this discussion. So similarly, 111 Independence, the public comment period began on December 4th. And written comments must be received by the close of business on February 2nd. Again, we would encourage that comments tonight also be submitted in writing. Each comment on the EIR will be formally responded to. On November 25th, 2019, the city issued the NOP and the initial study, which was included for review. The comment period for the NOP for the scope and the content of the EIR ended on December 16th, 2019. And as I just noted, the close of the comment period is on February 2nd, after which we'll prepare those written responses to each comment received on the adequacy of the EIR analysis in the response to comments document. It'll also include any revisions as necessary. After which, the city will consider certification of the EIR and consider approval of the project as separate actions. Similar to 111, EIR certification is anticipated for early summer. Again, a short overview of the Sequel process with the items in blue as the opportunities for public comment. We're now in that 60-day comment period for the draft EIR. And then there'll be an opportunity for public comment during the final certification hearing again. Some more background on the purpose of Sequel. Two things I want to call out just in particular, that Sequel documents are disclosure documents. The Lea Agency is using the information provided in the document to make informed decisions about a project and to disclose potential environmental impacts associated with construction operation. And that an environmental document does not dictate whether or not a project should be approved or not. I think we've touched on the Connect Memo EIR a lot. But this, this project does adhere from the analysis of the Connect Memo file EIR and fits within those, those development assumptions of the Connect Memo EIR. So this, this slide shows the findings of the initial study that was circulated with the notice of preparation. Based on the conclusions of the initial study, the topics shown in the right three boxes of this table were not further evaluated because it's not anticipated that the project would result in significant effects related to these issues, or they were adequately addressed by the Connect Memo EIR. So the EIR included evaluation of population, housing, transportation, air quality, greenhouse gas emission is emissions and noise. This slide is an overview of the findings for each topic. As you can see, no significant unavoidable impacts. And all impacts can be reduced with the implementation of mediation measures. So population and housing, again, a housing needs assessment was prepared system settlement agreement with East Palo Alto, which provided most of the context and background for the population housing section of the EIR. This, the are the EIR for this project finds that the project would fit within the growth projections of the Connect Memo EIR wouldn't induce any unplanned population growth and would increase the availability of housing and would not increase those displacement pressures on Bell Haven or East Palo Alto as well. And no mitigation measures would be required. For the topic of transportation, similarly, a TIA was prepared consistent with the city's TIA guidelines. Again, it's, it's the, it's using BMT now, not, not level of service. And it needs to be 15% below that established regional threshold. So the EIR determined that project would comply and would be below that BMT threshold with the implementation of a TDM plan. And for the office use portion, it was exempted because it was too small. The EIR also determined the project would generally comply with all those plans and policies related to transportation and wouldn't result in any new impacts related to design hazards or emergency access. And this EIR also includes that non-Sequel analysis for a level of service. Nine intersections were determined to exceed the critical movement away under the near term and 12 exceeded under the cumulative conditions. Similarly, there are some improvement measures that would be included as, as conditions of approval to improve these. For air quality, similar to 111 Independence, implementation of the Backman's basic construction measures will be implemented consistent with the findings of Connect Menlo. The basic construction mitigation measures. And the project would also not exceed any regional air quality emissions through operation. An HR is also prepared for this project as well. The analysis turns that mitigation measures would be required to ensure that construction equipment is specific emissions controls to reduce exposure to oxide receptors to those toxic air contaminants. And that the also, the analysis also determined that both on and off site receptors would not be exposed to substantial increases in toxic air contaminants. Greenhouse gas emissions, all impacts would be less than significant with the implementation of those basic construction measures further reduce those impacts. The project would be, would be well below the thresholds for operational emissions and would be generally consistent with all those plans that are aimed at reducing GHG emissions. Finally, for noise, transportation-related increases in noise would not exceed the city standards. There are some, because there's residential land uses and, you know, conditionally acceptable noise environment, mitigation measures will be required to reduce those interior noise impacts, including the installation of air conditioning so that windows can be closed, which is consistent with the Connect Memo EIR mitigation measures. This slide shows the project alternatives that were considered. It's the same alternatives that were considered under the connect or under 111 Independence. Sorry about that. So for the base level alternative, it's 339 fewer residential units than the proposed project and an increase of office space of approximately 18,000 square feet. And the inclusion of approximately 10,000 square feet of childcare uses. So while some of the impacts of the project will be slightly reduced to slightly reduced to reduced construction, another impact would be entirely avoided and similar mitigation measures would be required. In addition, the increased office use would result in an increase in BMT, which couldn't be reduced to a less than significant level as such that this alternative would reduce, would result in a significant unavoidable BMT impact associated with, associated with that. And then the maximum build-up alternative looks at development of the site, the maximum residential density. So the same number of residential units, but approximately 39,000 square feet of office use increase as well as that, that childcare use, the 10,000 square feet. Similarly, none of the impacts will be reduced or avoided. And the same mitigation measures will be required. And there would also be that same significant unavoidable BMT impact associated with this alternative. So it's, it was determined that the, in terms of environmental impacts, the proposed project itself is the environmentally superior alternative because it wouldn't have any significant of local impacts. And that will wrap it up for, for Sequel and, and our overview of the sequel process and the EIR analysis. Comments should be directed towards Tom for this one. And again, submitted before February 2nd, 5th.
Thank you. So Tom, is this an appropriate time to ask for? Well, first, I've got commissioner questions I'd like to ask for, but can I follow that up with public comments?
Yes. First, I would recommend actually seeking public comment. And then moving into commissioner questions. Before you do that, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that shortly before the meeting, we did get one additional item of correspondence. And that comment was from the owner of 167 Constitution Drive, which is located directly across from the project site. And he had expressed some concerns about access to Constitution Drive during construction that could potentially prevent large trucks from making deliveries to his business. He runs a plumbing supply business and he gets frequent deliveries from fairly large trucks and semis. And so he was concerned about narrowing or, or issues on, on Constitution during the construction process.
All right. And is this something that the building department can take care of in terms of traffic management requirements?
I actually looked back at the applicant's preliminary construction plan. And the project entrances for construction would actually be located in the vicinity of where the Paseo would be. So this, towards the center of the project site away from this driveway. And then also at the far edge of the proposed townhomes. And so those two main accesses would be a fairly good distance away from the concerned business owners' property.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, I will take your advice and we'll ask for a public comment. For those who are up late and are interested in this project and following us on this go-to webinar, you will see a hand icon on the side of the control panel that's on the right side of your screen, the webinar, go-to webinar control panel. If you click on that hand icon, it will indicate to staff that you would like to speak. And we will put you through. We are inviting the public to speak for up to three minutes on the subject of the Menlo Uptown project at this time. Alternatively, if you would like to use the chat method to type a question or brief comment, that is at the lower portion of the go-to webinar control panel. Would ask that you type at least an initial word or two at this time. So we know you were there and interested in making a comment. And we will give it another half a minute to see if anyone responds to our invitation to speak at this time.
Good evening, Chair. It looks like we do have a virtual hand raised. So I will go ahead and activate the microphone for the public commenter at this time. So Glenn Lynch, you should be able to activate your microphone now.
Welcome, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you. And thank you, commissioners, for staying up so late with the rest of us. I'm actually the business owner across the street that submitted the question. Thanks for reading that about truck access. My big concern there was that the big project on Constitution that just finished up, they closed off half of Constitution for most of a year while that project was going on, which didn't affect me at all. But the, you know, the entire length of Constitution was, was closed halfway down. If that happened in front of my site, those trucks would not be able to get into my driveway. That was my concern there. So I just wanted to make sure it was on the record. My, my other question is about the, the building of residential so close to industrial occupancies. You know, we do start early in the morning. We have forklifts and trucks running. I just kind of want to be also on record that the, that occupancy does generate noise. I do occasionally have a customer emergency late at night where I have to open my warehouse and fire up a forklift and load a commercial water heater onto somebody's truck. It's not, you know, it's not enormously loud, but there is noise generated there. To what extent will people moving in and buying these units sort of be cognizant of that? So that we don't end up with, you know, the classic, you know, move in next to an airport and then complain about the noise. I just want to, want to know if any of that has been considered. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Tapia, do we have any other hands raised for comments?
At this time, Chair, I'm not seeing any other comments or correspondence that's been submitted.
All right. At this time, I'd like to close the public comment period, bring it back to commissioners for questions or comments. At this point, the floor is entirely open as we address first the EIR and its adequacy and any elements therein. All right. Seeing no comments on the EIR, I close the EIR public hearing, noting that commissioners had no comments on that. And, and then open the study session. Again, for commission questions and comments.
And through the chair, if I may, I actually just wanted to pull up very quickly a slide. If you can get the PowerPoint presentation, it starts with number four. Essentially, staff had some questions along the lines of, similar to the questions for the previous project in terms of the community amenity proposal. In general, we're curious to know your thoughts on the site and building design, the BMR housing unit mix for the project. Again, there was already a discussion with the previous project about potential intersection improvements through the LOS analysis and whether those should be examined as project conditions. And then the size of the commercial space and the proposed use for that. So if you could provide us some focused on answers on that, the limited time that we have, we would greatly appreciate it.
All right. And then I'll just check in with Mr. Prada, if I may. Do you need me to read the introduction to the project for the study session?
No, the, the reading of the introduction is not explicitly required. It's something that has happened in the past and it's nice to have. I think, I think opening the item verbally, the way you did it is fine. I don't think you need to read the text in terms of the body of the agenda. That, that's okay. That, that isn't always an optional thing for the commission.
Okay, great. And if you could leave that screen up just a moment longer so that we can take note of what I'm sorry, if you could leave that screen up just a little bit longer, the six prompts, so that we can make a note of it and keep it in mind for when we speak. Can you back up?
Yeah, if we could get Tom's presentation slide two back up. Thank you.
There we go. The presentation slide four. Yeah.
One of the limitations of not having a paper in front of us is we can't cross-reference as we move through the images on the screen. All right. Thank you.
Through the chair, if it's beneficial, we could leave this slide up in this format through your discussion and, and comments and questions.
Does anyone else need this list in front of them? Commissioners. Commissioners? No, I think we're okay. Thank you. All right, so proceeding with the study session. Commissioners, any comments on the items prompted on the changes since our last meeting? Or in anything that you see either functionally or aesthetically on the project? Well, I'll kick it off while perhaps others are thinking. If I could ask I guess Mr. Manis to help us focus on the materials of the apartment building. The rendering that I have under my elbow happens to be at the EIR. And I don't know if that's the most current rendering because they look, yes.
If we bring up one of the exhibits in the deck that we were presenting there, there is the perspective there that with the rendering that we did actually indicates the materials that we're looking at.
Right, and it seemed to me that they were improved compared with what is on the EIR. Is that correct?
That's correct. We've continued to sort of dig to what's available, look at colors and textures and stuff like that. So you are correct Chair Riggs.
Thank you.
And it's page 16 of this PDF.
So can you speak to the striated fiber cement a little bit?
I sure can. I just will. So the terracotta rust color and the sort of darker gray color of both fiber cement panels. The, the, the one that is the charcoal color has a horizontal, refined horizontal texture to it that we've introduced. And that is true both with the terracotta color. And then when you get to the corners, we're utilizing a metal panel and a portion for the accent at the surrounds and at the corner elements for looking at a, what's called a phenolic, which is a sort of wood textured kind of finish on the upper levels. As I mentioned to you, we're looking at a lighter finish there. And I think in all cases, the, the cement fiber panels that we're looking at are less flat in color. They have a texture to them that will help sort of light, be a little bit more subtle in terms of the way it gets reflected off of them.
And the, I'm sorry, when you, when the outside corners meet with these fiber cement panels. Where it's used as a rain screen, there is frequently a gap, say a three eighths gap among the panels. And therefore also at the corner where it's lapped, it either faces east or it faces south. In this case, it doesn't look like you're gapping the panels. Do you have a fiber cement to fiber cement exterior corner? Or is that where you referred to the metal corner?
It's the corner we're trying to make monolithic over there to avoid that corner that you would see. That's the, that's the strategy there to try and emphasize those corners.
All right, excellent. So it's, it, it looks like a humongous piece of limestone.
Not quite, but that's the idea.
All right. And then the, at the pedestrian level, I really like the transparency that you have going there. Is that a different material than the fiber cement panel?
The, the ground, the, the ground level is all storefront. And in between the storefront, there are some solid spandrel panels that are part of the storefront system. But the idea is you, as you picked up on is to provide that sort of porosity, particularly at the street. And as you wrap around on the Paseo frontage. So, you know, particularly on the right side there in this rendering, you see where the, the main entrance is trying to highlight that with the, the light that comes off of that at the corner. That is one of the community spaces over there. Again, we're trying to provide this sort of activity in life as you walk along there. And if you go back Tim, if you would, to the aerial, the aerial also begins to sort of demonstrate, thank you. The importance of that, one more, the importance of then, I know it's probably hard to see, but the importance of that sort of grand Paseo that actually goes from street to street and provides a sort of engagement for the buildings. And those corners are really important that you saw in that earlier rendering for the residential.
That really is a meaningful looking space and that is turf of some kind, that majority of green?
Karen can talk, it's, it's a combination of soft and hardscape and the ability, particularly, I think, as you remember, the Commission was very instrumental in, in helping us to create that, that sort of park-like character at the frontage of the Paseo. And then it sort of wanders its way through to the, to the, through, through the block. And then allows it also to sort of split off into both the multifamily side on the right and the townhouses on the left. So yes, it is pretty significant. And I think we're very excited about the potential that it offers.
And it's, it's lawn, the green flat areas are actual lawn. And then it's colored concrete for much of the pathway with circular accents that are hexagonal pavers.
Oh, that's wonderful to hear. As we in, in single family, try to reduce our lawn for the sake of water use, that leaves open the question, just where does one go in order to sit on the grass? And public spaces are the answer. This is, that's to me definitely an amenity.
Yes, that, we definitely recognize that struggle. And so if used, we're allowed to use that in our water budget. So it's something we try and tuck into projects like these.
And this being, the apartments at least highly symmetrical. What we're seeing in the way of transparency at this corner would apply to all four corners, really.
Correct.
That's great. All right, other Commissioners, comments or questions? Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, two questions and I'm happy to, to offer comments on the, the list of categories presented by staff. One is I'm on the open space. So overall on the open space, and especially with these renderings from the conversation we had last time, I think this is looking really nice. But I did note that it is less open space, public open space. And it made reference that that was just due to some more specific understanding of, you know, how it's going to be utilized. I wondered if you could just explain where did, where did the project lose public open space? Karen, you want to take that or?
I can, I can jump in here. It was, it was really that some areas that we had included has open space right around the entrances to the multifamily building. The staff suggested that it's, it's probably not appropriate to call them open space. And so we removed them from the calculations. That's areas like that that were removed from the open space calculation.
So it's just like space right around the entrance to the building is?
Yeah, Commissioner DeCarty, I mean, these are, these are very, very small areas. They got sort of exchanged from public to private. But I think in all cases, we really didn't change the amount of open space. It was just a category that it ended up being put in by staff in terms of their technical reading of the code.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it. And then the second question is a follow up and appreciate your communication around utilization of the diesel generator for the backup on the parking garage, the stacked parking. Certainly makes a lot of sense to not use natural gas for all sorts of reasons. And appreciate the detail as you talked about the description between the diesel and the battery. As you noted, the battery, the, the changes in, in battery use and capacity are happening so quickly now. As you move forward with the project, my question is, would you consider at least keeping an open mind and then getting, and bidding that out to an entity for, you know, as you're making the go no-go on this? Just understand where batteries are as a potential alternative?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm happy to keep the planning commission up to date on what we find there. I think our, as, as, as I noted in that presentation, our biggest challenge, one is space within the building to fit it. And two is just the capacity of the battery to handle an automated parking system for longer than 90 minutes or so. But, but I'm as interested in the future of battery as anyone. And I'm happy to continue studying that until we get to the point where it does work for projects like these.
I appreciate it. It makes sense. And while it's a bit of a shame that given the overall energy use of the project and the goals of the city to have this one exception, as you note, it's, it's not a huge contributor to greenhouse gas emissions at a massive scale. So appreciate you looking into it, appreciate, continue to look into it. But if it ends up having to be diesel, it's not, I, I feel strongly on these issues, but this is not one that I would take huge exception to. I can understand that. And then in terms of overall feedback that the staff has asked for on the site and building design, I think is looking really good as Commissioner Riggs has already alluded to. On the open space, I think that's also looking really promising. I'm much more interested in the public open space. I figure on the private open space, you guys will make that as lovely as possible to be able to get as much out of the people who are going to live there. So continuing to zero in on the public open spaces is finalized this, but the direction seems really good. The BMR mix does feel important to me. I appreciate the, you said this last time. And then in the materials this time that you're constrained because of where the city is. On the other hand, this is a lot of units and we're not going to get a lot of wax at this as a city. And it sure would be great, as the staff report notes, if there was some way to get the levels that were aligned to where we have the biggest shortfalls here. We don't need to get into details about it right now, but sure would be great. We just looked at another project much smaller that did change its mix. I know different projects pencil out differently, but for me, it'd be great to look at that mix and to see if we could get a variety. To the staff on the transportation, yes, as I said on the last project, the, I think it's absolutely worth continuing to look into the non-sequitur transportation impacts and what you've all can do in that and would completely support it. And then on the community amenity. So a huge fan conceptually, so my whole career has been in the nonprofit space and I've done a bunch of stuff in this area. So completely supported, I think nonprofits being able to be located within communities and to have their staff be able to be there at a vibrancy that is unique and important. So I'm a, I'm a big fan of nonprofit spaces. Dedicating to a specific nonprofit, I get the appeal. And if it can work out, that's great. But I also would be open to any number of other sort of, you know, nonprofit staff uses for workspace so they can be vital in the community. And then to the
I'm sorry, just on that point, because I think it's important. VCLT would only take a portion of the 2,900 square feet that we have. And they would rent out the remainder to other nonprofits in the area. And so it would be a mix of various nonprofits, probably around supporting housing and affordable housing in the area. But it, they, any rent that was gained from that would go to supporting a community land trust, the community land trust in Menlo Park. So it's an ongoing source of revenue for affordable housing.
I, I think that type of arrangement, I get it. And I think that could work really well. I think you, you've got questions about, you know, what happens if VCLT goes belly up? And, you know, you have to work through those questions since this conveys for the duration of the project. But I'm supportive in this space. And if that unique arrangement is one that feels really good to you and the community supports it, I think that can work great. And then I guess the, the, you know, making sure that, I guess the, the question was from the city, how to make sure that the total amenity value is put into this mix. But it sure looked to me like these are things that you could adjust with the amount of funding that you're making in order to buy properties that then would have the permanent easements on them for, for housing. That those types of options are available. So I guess unless I'm missing something, it didn't seem to me that it was too terribly difficult to be able to make up the difference while still staying in the same ballpark of what you all were working on with the community amenity. And I think I'll stop. That's my feedback.
All right, thank you. Mr. Barnes? Microphone.
There you go. Thank you. I was seeing you muted by the organizer. So it's probably a good idea at this late.
I didn't do it.
So thank you to the, to our, our friends. Thanks for the presentation this evening. Couple of things as it relates to planning commission considerations. One, the BMR housing unit mix. And the applicant's proposal to comply, to combine the partial BMR unit requirements for the four cell running units into an extra unit. That is fine. I do not want to see an in lieu fee for the partial units. That's first one. Second one is site and building design. We've come a long way. I have no further refinements for your project. I think it stands well on its own. It works well contextually in the area that it's in, in the building types that are around it, in the, in the environment that it's in. No problems there. Non-residential space, I don't have any. I don't have any, anything to offer about the non-residential space. I don't, I don't know anything about VCLT. My concern would be the viability of them. So, you know, who, whatever you use it for, it's fine. Just, you know, be, have provisions in there that should another use be needed. One, because there's non-performance of a tenant, two, because they're not, they're, they're not holding the covenants of their lease. It's more important that the space remain rather than who's using the space. I don't want to, I don't want the, the user of the space to be a red herring for it being a great idea. I want the space to be the space and then whoever uses it has to be there on their own merits. And the merits need to be reviewed over time. I'm not sure what that mechanism is, but there needs to be a review of what those merits are and what it is, the, the, the community space is intended for and is that tenant fulfilling it? And I would want to see mechanisms to review that. And I don't know what that looks like. It could be a third party oversight. But there needs to be mechanisms in there so the space is a productive space always. You know, as it relates, and again, I can't weigh, on the community amenity proposal, I can't weigh in on VCLT because I know nothing about them. And I, I like the ideas of land trust. I don't know how viable there are. They are in Menlo Park given, given land use. So I don't have anything to say about that. I would say though, to the question about, what do you, what is the Commission's idea about a different use of funds for the gap? In other words, you provide the gap in value of the proposed community amenity. Should it be fulfilled by increasing the lump sum payment to entity X or Menlo Park Community Center? You know, fact is, is my point of view is that you go to the Redwood Ravenswood School District. You know, we have community amenities. We have, it has to queue up to what that predetermined list is. If there is something in there, and I'm looking at the list, that relates to education, that would be my preference. Certainly would be my preference over going to the community center. I, you know, I'm looking at the amount of I, you know, I'm looking at the amount of impact fees for the project, and $800,000 goes to the elementary school district. And if you look at the unit count going in there, yes, demographically, it may skew younger without kids. But fact of the matter is, is it's an enormous burden on the community, an enormous burden on the school district. So my recommendation would be any excess funds go to, or any funds that are in that gap that are cash contributions, find a way to give to the school district. I did note, though, that in the EIR and in the maximum build-out, there was reference to a childcare center. And what was that reference? I know that certainly I raised my hand and said, you know, childcare in that area for any of your projects would be a fantastic use of space. Is that a placeholder, and these supersede those, or what is that?
That is a teaser for another project. So we're working on childcare center in our other project called Menlo Portal.
Why didn't it show up in this one? It was just a?
I think it was in response to your suggestion. I'll let staff take that.
Yeah, I can jump in if you'd like. I think when we set out the alternatives for the draft EIR, what we were looking to do was find the balance of live-work-play consistent with connect Menlo and incorporating additional office space and non-residential space into the project. We had heard concerns from the commission and interest in having childcare uses integrated into this project or another project that's proposed in the area. And so we just put that in there to see what we would get out of that as an alternative for the project.
Yes, thank you. And Commissioner Riggs, let me add, I don't mean to be jumping the shark by not going through you for questioning. So thank you for your full bearings here. So back to that childcare, you know, and if you can aggregate a meaningful amount of space, then it becomes all the more important. So I am 100% on board and supportive of any childcare alternatives that you may be thinking of in that area. Because, you know, that is hard to get. The economics never work. The problem with childcare is the economics never work when you get to staffing and finding a facility for it. So finding a facility that is, finding a project that needs to provide space, community amenity and otherwise, is the perfect intersection of, you know, economics which don't normally work, meeting availability of space. And then you staff it, and good things start to happen. So I certainly would look forward to that on another project. Overall development proposal, you know, is it appropriate for the area to be a transition from office to industrial to residential? Yes, and I think your design reflects that. I am going to, Commissioner Riggs, if it's okay with you, go back to this roadway congestion LOS intersection improvements. And I'd like to ask staff if it's okay with you.
It is.
Great. So the question is divided in two halves. It says effectively, for low feasibility and high feasibility projects, should, you know, the intersection improvements be made a condition? So my first question is, for low feasibility, well, for high, if the improvements were made, would it make a difference in people's lives?
If the roadway improvements were implemented?
If the roadway congestion LOS intersection improvement. And it says, should improvement measures to bring intersectional loads back to pre-project conditions be considered as conditions of approval for project, for the proposed project, if they have a high level of feasibility? So I get, the first question is, you know, there's two levels of feasibility. And even a bigger question above that is, these intersection improvements, should they be done? Or if they were done, is it meaningful? Would it be helpful? Because, yeah.
Yeah, I think if the intersection improvements were implemented, it would return all of those intersections back to the pre-project condition. So it would reduce potential congestion at those intersections associated with increases in traffic. The difference between the high feasibility and low feasibility, and I think Kyle discussed this a little bit before on the other project, is the high feasibility projects are pretty easy, or relatively easy to consider because they don't require additional right-of-way acquisitions, they don't require roadway widening, and they're covered by the project TIF payment, transportation impact fees. And so I think those are fairly straightforward. The low feasibility intersection improvements take a little bit more thought, I think because of the fact that they could lead to induced demand because of roadway widening or moving traffic signals. A lot of, some of them have, are under state control. And so it would take a lot of work with Caltrans and going through their process, which sometimes they, we would have to basically check in and see if they were, would accept those things. And so there are some barriers to the low feasibility intersection improvements that would need to be considered. And staff is still looking, I would say, at the, for the low feasibility intersection improvements. Our transportation staff is continuing to review those potential intersection improvements to give a little bit better guidance in the future on our thoughts on those.
So effectively, through the construction process, through the redevelopment process, these intersections got trashed, got reconfigured. And the question is, do they get put back to where they were prior to the project being undertaken? Is that essentially what we're talking about?
It wouldn't be actually a physical impact to the intersection. It's not that the intersections would be torn up as part of construction work. It's more that traffic in the area would potentially increase, which would lead to greater delays at those intersections for vehicles that were waiting at stoplights, signalized intersections essentially. I hope I'm getting that right, if our transportation staff wants to jump in to correct me if I'm wrong. Or Kyle.
I can chime in. I think that was, you know, I think that was a good explanation, Tom. Just to expand a little bit, you could think of this, and I try not to use sequo as an explanation here because I tried to make a very distinct distinction before. But this is much, this is very similar to what you would have seen as a previous mitigation for a traffic impact, where level of service, an intersection degrades by over the city's standard. So delay, you in your car sit there longer than you would have pre-project. And so these would be the, what we would have called mitigations before. At this point, they're now potential improvement measures that could be conditions of approval. There's no longer a sequent mitigation measure, but the city's TIA guidelines did retain level of service as a policy. And so that's the question before, the commission, is to provide some feedback and initial guidance on our initial analysis, where we have identified that there are potential impacts, if you will, to an intersection. And these are potential measures that could improve it back to pre-project conditions. And just to expand on the low versus high, we are still even looking at the high feasibility because there could be trade-offs that we want to evaluate. Even if you're not expanding the right-of-way, you could be potentially impacting a bike lane or another pedestrian facility, and that would be a trade-off that we, the city would need to look at policies and desires there to see what it would recommend. Certainly, we want to make sure that vehicle improvement doesn't come at the cost of a bike or a pedestrian.
Right, and I guess that's it. I mean, there's a trade-off to everything. If we had pixie dust that we could sprinkle and have everything be, you know, better, or whatever that looks like, then that's good. But I assume there's trade-offs. What I would say is, from my perspective, high feasibility for sure, low feasibility, just so there's no an inducement of demand. And you're not impacting adversely other modalities for getting around, and you're not adding any cars on the road. So yes, but, you know, no more cars, no more, you know, not inducing demand. But those are my two big pieces there, in the context of trade-offs. So that, those are your considerations, and that's my input, and I'm glad we've made it this far. Mr. Manas, I always see you in that lobby. Do you work in a friary, or are you a priori? Excuse me, you're a monk in your night job?
No, Commissioner Barnes, it's actually my study in my house. It's a early, it's a 1920s Tudor, and the people, yeah, it looks like a little chapel. It's just a wonderful room. So, yeah, this is my house.
Yeah, you do dress the part, though.
Just black.
Thank you. That's it for me. I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, and the only comment or question that I had was actually also going to be on potential intersection improvements. And I'm actually, I think, somewhat aligned with Mr. Barnes here in that I wouldn't want to see compromises and a whole lot of extra paving. But I do think a goal has to be kept in mind that these projects are impacting the continuing existing uses of this area, which are industrial and development and adjacent to biotech and so forth. Some of those uses will continue, and as we heard from the across-the-street neighbor, deliveries can be important. I also think in these areas that are so clearly mixed-use that what they're currently calling box trucks on the traffic reports, which would include local deliveries, but also just fleets of Federal Express, UPS, and now Amazon and other companies flying in and out. And there was a, I think a Walmart distribution center right in this, between this and the neighborhood of the previous project. These trucks really count on access, and for them, time matters. So it is industry, a little bit like that credit card commercial from two or three years ago, where everyone is just marching through the lunch counter until somebody comes up with cash and brings everything to a halt. The commercial transportation is a significant concern I do think we need to keep in mind. So if there is any such thing as low-hanging fruit in the world of intersection improvements, I'd like to see that. I will take this opportunity to note that Menlo Park has a problem with finishing its traffic signal programming. Part of that is due to previous transportation management level, I believe, where we instituted a lot of red turn arrow left turns. The problem with these red arrows is that, unlike some other parts of the country, or for that matter, over in North Fairhoeks, getting into Costco, the red arrow doesn't go away. You sit there, whether traffic is coming on or not. That is an impediment in the flow-through of working vehicles. It also, as a separate cycle, which it requires, of course, to have green arrow, lengthens the overall cycle. And as we know, we, I think, sometimes have to remember, traffic is not about the number of cars. The perception of traffic is not the number of cars that flow through. I mean, most people have no idea that 30,000 cars a day go down El Camino. The image of traffic is when it stops, then you have traffic. And if you have to stop for two minutes for a traffic cycle, that's a problem. And we have that all over Menlo Park because we don't finish designing intersections. So I hope any potential mitigations that revolve around intersections will complete the job. That's as much as staff suggestion as it is to our applicants here tonight. Are there any other final comments from our commissioners? All right, well, in the world of no news is good news. I think there's a lot of appreciation for the planning, design, and detailing of this project. And I'm glad that it's going to move forward come hell or high water because of state law. And I look forward to that. And with that, unless Mr. Smith, you have any last items that you want us to take care of, I'm ready to close the hearing.
I think we've gotten the answers that we need to, all the questions and topic areas that were set out. So thank you. I really appreciate you staying the extra time to go through this.
Wonderful. All right, so that concludes item G2 on our agenda. And we'll complete with any informational items from Mr. Prada.
Okay, thank you. So I do have one. I'll make it quick. So I wanted to, the commission should be aware, but 1, 2, 3 in the Pendants Drive, we released the notice of preparation of a EIR for that project on Friday. So that 30-day EIR scoping period is now set from 1/8, the release date, to 2/8. So February 8th is the closed date for that. And we will be holding, at the planning commission, a EIR scoping meeting on the 25th. So January 25th meeting will be a scoping meeting for EIR. And I believe that is the only item on that meeting, so it will be a little bit shorter than tonight.
Scoping meetings do tend to be shorter, so we can look forward to that. All right, and is there anything at this late hour from commissioners as we close our meeting? All right, very good. Then this meeting is adjourned at 11:34 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work and for staying late. Really, really appreciate it.
Amen to that.
Thank you. Good night.
Well said.